Being 5:30, I now call to order our regular meeting of the Lake Placid Town Council this Monday evening, September 15th, 2025, in the government center of the great town of Lake Placid. A couple things, make sure your phones are either off or unvibrate. We don't want any eruptions during the meeting. And for those of you that are wearing covers, please take them off while you're in the chambers here. We appreciate that. At this time, I'm proud to say we have with us tonight a man of many titles. He's the chairman of our LPA. We appreciate all he does. He's also the pastor of Grace Fellowship Bible.
That's close enough, we'll go with that.
Close enough, okay. So at this time, if everybody would please rise, we're honored to have him lead us in our invocation and pledge.
Please pray with me. Lord, we're thankful for the beautiful gift of democracy and this remarkable country that we get to live in, and I thank you for this piece of land that we get to call home, and we want to steward it well. And I pray that you would give the wisdom of heaven to our local governors, that they would know how to best steward this community for your glory and for our good. Lord, we just pray for just some of the tragedy we've experienced here in recent weeks and ask for your help and comfort for those families that have been affected. We thank you for the gift of life. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Go there, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time, I'll have the roll call, please.
Mayor Holbrook.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Worley.
Here.
Councilmember Charles.
Councilmember Everhart.
Here.
We have a rural water presentation, but they're not here yet, so we're going to start in with our public hearings. And the first one is ordinance 2025-10. And it's an ordinance of town of Lake Placid, Florida, adopting the final levelling of ad valorem taxes for Lake Placid, Florida for fiscal year 2025-2026, providing for an effective date. Now, this will be on second reading and adopt.
I'll go ahead and move to approve and adopt ordinance 2025-10 for the fiscal year 2025-2026. The operating mileage rate for the town is 3.65 mils, which is more than the rollback rate of 2.5035 mils by 45.80 percent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it the audience. All right, saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley.
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart.
Yes.
Next is second reading ordinance 2025-11.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve and adopt ordinance 2025-11, town Lake Placid budget for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Let me read that into it. Let me read the title in. We do have a motion, though. Ordinance number 2025-11, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Placid, Florida, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year 2025-26, allowing for line item adjustments during the year as needed and provided for an effective date. Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it the audience. Saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley.
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart.
Yes.
The next one, ordinance 2025-06, we have tabled for the time being. So now we'll go to 20...
We need a motion to table to a time certain.
All right, and all right, let me bring it up. Ordinance number 2025-06, an ordinance of town of Lake Placid, Florida, vacating certain rights of way as requested by Donald and Tina Clark and Clark Self-Storage LLC, reserving utility easements and a drainage and flowage easement, and providing for an effective date. So I need a motion to table that and a second.
Hopefully to the next regular town council meeting. Or do you want, Charlotte, do you want to go to the second meeting of next month?
The motion, recommended motions to October 20th, which is the second meeting.
Dana, second also. Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion to table this item, the second reading of ordinance 2025-06, LPTC 25.01, vacation of alleyway Donald and Tina Clark and Clark Self-Storage LLC, care of Kibberly Sap, tabled to the next council meeting, which would be October 20th, the next regular council meeting, October 20th, 2025.
Second.
I just want to say that we're tabling this because the parties couldn't be here tonight, so they've asked us to table this until they can be here next time. So anyway, we're trying to work with the public. Thank you.
And I can't help it, it's really not the next council meeting, it's the one October... You got the right date, but it's the second council meeting of October.
Okay. Now we'll go to D, first reading ordinance 2025-12.
Mayor, I got a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, any other comments from the podium? All right, hearing none, we'll take it the audience. Got a little ahead of myself. All right, hearing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Councilmember Worley.
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart.
Yes.
All right, we got ordinance number 2025-12, food truck regulations. Table that one? Or we'll just bypass it till they get here? Okay. So then we'll go to E, ordinance 2025-09, and this is Grace Bible Church of Highlands County.
Good evening, Dana Riddell, town planner for the record. Mayor, would you be able to read this ordinance captioning to the record?
Yes. Ordinance number 2025-09, an ordinance of the town of Lake Placid, amending the zoning classification of a properly located 580 East Interlake Boulevard bearing parcel ID P-31-36-30-07A-0110-0040 from R-1A Single Family Dwelling District to C-2PD Limited Commercial District with a planned development to allow for a church and church uses, and adding section 160-23 of the code of town of Lake Placid entitled Grace Bible Church, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Again, my name is Dana Riddell, town planner for the record. This hearing has been duly noticed and proof of publication is included in the file. Before us tonight, we have a request for rezoning for the Grace Bible Church, hearing number LPTC dot 25 dot 005, and it's ordinance number 2025-09. The owner of the property is now Grace Bible Church of Highlands County, and it's located at 580 East Interlake Boulevard in Lake Placid, Florida, 33852. The agent of the property is Terry Campbell with Ministry Solutions Group. You'll see from looking at the map, actually, these maps could use some updates, because what had happened was this property was initially under one ownership as the South Florida State College, and it has been split a couple times and put back together, and it... The blue line that you see here actually should extend further west to include these two buildings, and the site plan will reflect those buildings. That's part of the ordinance. So the applicant is requesting a rezoning for the subject property from single-family residential R-1A to limited commercial planned development district to allow for a church and church uses, and adding section 160-23 of the town code of the town of Lake Placid, which will be entitled Grace Bible Church Planned Development Ordinance. You can see on the map, it is very, very rare that we have seen this in the town of Lake Placid. This is much more common in the unincorporated Highlands County, but it's not unheard of. What you'll notice is the future land use is commercial general, but it has an inconsistent zoning of R-1A. That's how the property sits today. The college that is there now was constructed prior to the application and institution of zoning and future land use. So when zoning happened, it happened first. Basically, the state came in and said, look, like urban sprawl is happening, things are growing out of control, we need to regulate properties and what happens on them. So they started instituting zoning. They did that, and they were like, okay, well, essentially, you're recognizing the uses that exist on the properties today, and you're applying rules to those properties. But there's still no vision for the future growth of that area, or the town, or the county, wherever that may be. So they came in later on in the 80s, and they applied future land use. And that was supposed to guide the future of how decisions are made in the future and how zoning and future land use is applied. So essentially, they had a residential zoning district. They said a college would be fine in a residential zoning district, or sometimes churches are okay in residential zoning districts. But when the state came back in in the 80s, they said, but in the future, we want this to be commercial. So that's how that happened. That's how it became inconsistent, and the church, or I'm sorry, the college exists there today with that inconsistency. It's just a game of who came first. So what they're requesting is a rezoning to C-2PD. The reason for the PD is I made a discovery that there's not a single zoning district in the town of Lake Placid that allows churches without a special exception. So they could have rezoned the property and had a special exception, and had multiple hearings for the different things that they needed to accomplish on this property, or they could have just rezoned to a planned development. So in the C-2 district, a church is allowed as a special exception, but they just went and encumbered it all, because they have to do a rezoning anyway for consistency with the future land use, and they applied for a C-2PD. So this is the site plan. You'll see it, it does encompass those two other buildings, and you'll also see that heavy line there kind of indicating that at one point this was parceled out separately. So next time you see me next week, if we're doing next week, no, it'll be next month, my maps will be updated, and you'll see what it looks like today. But this is what they're committing to. They're committing to using the building in the northwest as meeting rooms, the southwest as a youth facility, what's currently the college's gym would be an auditorium with a maximum of 300 seats, and also their children's facility, specifically meaning Sunday school, Wednesday night meetups for kids, and the building on the east will be for classrooms. They have 48 paved parking spaces on site. The code requires a couple more spaces, I believe it's 58, and I have those details further in the slides if we want to get into the details and nitty-gritty, but I don't want to keep us here all night. So as part of their planned development, they're asking to be allowed to use some of the parking in the town right-of-way. So the way that it's worded is that there won't be any spaces reserved for the church. It's like any other business that comes in and utilizes the parking in the town right-of-way. It just gives them the ability to use that. And then the property that's all the way to the west will still remain, there's one building that will remain a college, and they're also requesting dual-use parking with the college. So dual-use parking essentially is when businesses keep different operating hours and they don't need the parking lot at the same time. So we know church occurs all morning on Sunday and usually Wednesday nights, and the college is usually Monday through Friday, and they do achieve some night classes and things of that nature, but not to the extent that would hinder operations for either entity. So those are the requests that are included as part of the PD. What I would consider the deviations, the dual-use parking would have required approval from the local planning agency, and like I said, the special exception would have required approval from the board of adjustment, and the rezoning would have required approval from the town council. So it's all bundled here together, it's part of the ordinance that's in the packet. They also included some renderings of how they expect the building to look. Our decisions tonight are not based off of these renderings. Our decision tonight is based on whether or not the use is an appropriate use, the parking is sufficient, or if the town is accepting of allowing some parking to occur in the town right-of-way. It's actually the county-maintained right-of-way. The county is aware of the request for parking to overflow into the county right-of-way, and they simply ask that a condition be added into the ordinance that would state something to the effect of, like, there won't be any stacking on Interlake, or any traffic movements that would interfere with the traffic on Interlake. So instead of bringing you through an entire top-to-bottom presentation going through every public facility, every department comment, all of that is included in the packet. I do have slides available if the council would like to see them with those details. But for now, I'll turn it back over to the mayor with the motion options available on the screen, and staff is recommending a motion to approve this hearing on first reading. It'll go to the local planning agency in the beginning of October, and it'll come back to you for second reading later in October.
I'm right next door, so I'm contiguous to the college, so I'm the neighbor, and I got the notice, because I'm within 1,000 feet, and I also own property back on Hibiscus, and I'm just thrilled. I mean, I just think this is a wonderful thing for our town. A few parking spaces, there's always parking out there. I live there 24/7, and I have my office there, and there's always parking, so I don't think that should be a problem. And I'm just really thrilled. I think it's going to be a real asset to our town. I grew up there, I went to school there, my mother went to school there, I mean, and I'm pretty old. So anyway, I'm just, I really recommend we do this. I think it's going to be an asset to the town. I'll make the motion. Okay, I move to approve, let me make sure I got this right. I move to approve hearing number LPTC dot 25 dot 005RZ, ordinance number 2025-09 on first reading.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other comments from the podium?
I just have a question on the parking. I've been concerned about that, and your materials that you provided us said that if they have 48 parking spaces and plus what the school was going to allocate for them to use would give them a total of 60 parking spaces. And then the other material indicated there'd be 200 to 250 people there on a Sunday. Are we going to carpool? If I divide that by two, that's a lot more than 60 parking spaces, and just in addition, there's a neighboring church just, you know, at the end of the block there, and are your services going to be at the same time? So are we going to have duplicate parking issues? I mean, I'm tickled to death to have the church where it's proposed, and I agree with Deborah, but I'm just concerned about the parking and how that might impact the neighborhood.
Thank you. So the number 60 comes from the town's parking requirements. The town's code requires one space per every five seats, so I think the town code probably does assume some level of carpooling. And so with the number of people expected, if it's 253 and they all have full cars, five people per car...
That gives you 50, so you're good.
Yeah, yep, that's 50.
Yeah, okay. All right, I just wanted to make a note of the parking, because I have a feeling down the road we're going to have other issues with parking with other development that's expected in the town, and I think what we do here might set a precedent for future, and I want to make sure that we have in mind what we do here with reference to parking. I don't know if there is another option for parking, but we have, you have the parking that's on the same side as the proposed church. Are they able to use parking on the other side of the street as well? And then there's some parking behind that school over there as well that would be okay too? So maybe we can live with that?
Certainly. Any paved parking? I think there were, there was a letter submitted stating the hours of operation.
Yes, I read it.
Yeah. And that was the basis for my recommendation for approval, because, like you said, if anyone else comes forward and requests the same thing, we need to understand, you know, is this going to cause a congestion issue or a traffic issue, which also there's conditions listed in the PD that address that. But in this case, it would be more of a dual-use parking scenario where, at this time, we kind of know there's not too many businesses open on Sunday.
True.
Which also will contribute to some of our conversation later on today about parking in right-of-way, who should be able to install parking in the town right-of-way, and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Before we take it to the audience, I want to thank Dustin for these renderings, and if it turns out half as good as this looks, this is really a compliment to the town. You know, these buildings are a big history of what Lake Placid is, and the fact that we're going to try to keep them and update them is just a plus, not only for him, but for our community, and I want to thank him for that. All right, we'll take it the audience. We do have a motion and a second to approve it. Are there any comments?
I know that we're only...
You have to come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record.
From my understanding...
Name and address for the record.
Wanda Hall, 332 Hibiscus, Lake Placid. I understand, sir, that we only have three minutes, so if the residents don't mind, can I take a little bit of your time? I want to go back and, for you cannot, number one, we welcome the church, but you cannot rezone a building that's already there. But what you all are trying to do is rezone the makeup of the community from residential to commercial. What we should be speaking about at this juncture is how we went into the planning, remember, Ms. Worley? On 2016, for a lot of the members that are new, what we should have done in welcoming on the new city council members was go over some of these plans that was already put into place on 2016. And then we revised these plans back in the 20s, that a certain part, all that you all wanted revamped, pardon my name, for commercial back in 2016, my name was on the list, back in 2016, we had already pulled out a map, but it was not going to touch Lake Placid, the historical part, not at all, no matter who moved in, no matter who wanted the build, who wanted the park, from Interlake Boulevard all the way back over on my street, all them little buggered-up houses. Sometimes you all are being a little deceitful, and Ms. Worley, you was the main one who fought for the community on your last term as city council. And I'm speaking for the community. Yeah, the church need to be revamped, sir, or what about some of our old houses? And then I think there's an ordinance somewhere I couldn't be wrong, forgive me, you guys, but it's not right. And then they come in with all their money, and they get to pick and choose, but you all promised us, and we voted for you, right, Ms. Worley? I don't remember you winning that seat, I couldn't be wrong for city council. I think you lost that seat, I'm not sure, but I know this, Ms. Worley, in able to get back in that seat where you're at, ma'am, and Mr. Mayor, you needed somebody that could speak on your characteristics.
Ma'am, your time's up.
That's what I thought.
Thank you for your comments.
I just want to, since I was mentioned quite a few times, if there's a change of use, so this use is church, if there was a significant change of use, which you would have another go at this...
Okay, okay, that's enough. Go ahead, Ken.
All right, Ken LeBlanc, 346 and 360 East Hibiscus. I own two properties there, so we just built two houses that we have rented out, and I just purchased three more lots down the street. Don't remember the address, but those are behind the school portion. Yeah, I think, you know, sometimes, you know, if you buy an old building like they're buying this old building, it takes the money of the masses in order to do the renovation, you know, from somebody who's bought a couple 1954 buildings, a 1925 building, there is nothing cheap about renovating those buildings. They're going to take it back to shell and do electric plumbing, air conditioning, you name it, they're going to do it, and they're going to spend probably millions of dollars doing it. And I can't think of anything else that would be better in this location than a church, you know, beyond the school that was there, and the school, you know, can't handle that building anymore, it's just too old. When it comes to parking, I know a lot of people have concerns about parking, you know, but I just say, what's your plan for the empty parking spaces? Because Dustin's plan is to fill them all up, you know, on a Sunday when they're all empty right now, up and down the street, right? Wednesday nights, you know, when they do their Bible studies, things like that. So I don't see anything but good coming from this church taking over that property and doing the hard lifting of having to renovate that property, which is not easy, and coming from a builder, you know, who's done that kind of work. And so, you know, from an adjacent property owner that, you know, would be technically affected by what they're doing, you know, I see it's all positive, you know, and positive for the community, and I honestly don't really see any downside to it at all. It's all positive, you know, for what would be coming for us. And so I just want to say I support it. Kudos to them for taking on the big challenge that they're taking on, and look forward to seeing it happen and open up and, you know, visiting their church. So, all right, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley.
Mayor.
What, I have a question.
Oh, you had a question, yeah, something, okay, sorry.
For the clarification of the new council people and for the people who are in the audience, can you explain what Ms. Hall was trying to tell us? I couldn't follow it.
To be honest, I'm not quite sure. To be honest, I'm not quite sure. She's a neighbor of mine, and she does, does get active in that. But I think what she's concerned about is, I don't know, something came up about when there was some commercial going on down Twenty-Seventh, maybe that's when Publix was going in and that. And there was a concern that, for the commercial use, okay? So when you have a use like this, if it changes, so you're not looking at having an Amazon distribution center coming in there just because it's commercial, which would kind of be industrial. But I'm just saying, I think I need to go talk to my neighbor. So she understands that the use dictates what it can be used for, and that's why the parking works, okay? That's why, because of the hours and what the use of the building is, works. If it was a different use, it might not work. And I am also in agreement with Mr. LeBlanc. The building is in disrepair, and, and, you know, I grew up there, and it's really sad to see it in the condition it is right now. If somebody doesn't do something with it, it's gonna, it's not going to live, it's going to die. So I'm really thrilled. And I think for the use that this is being used for, it's perfect. They're going to take control of it, they're going to fix it up, it's going to be a use that can be in that area and not impact, I mean, I'm right next door, my office and my home are there, of course I wouldn't want parking, nobody to be able to park near my office, I'm in real estate. So I get it, I mean, we have to be cautious, but at the same time, I live there, I, I walk the streets with my little puppy dog, and I think it's a great use, I really do. And I'm just, I'm so thrilled. I think it's going to bring, on off times, on the weekends, it's going to bring people downtown, they're going to go around, they're going to eat at our restaurants, they're going to walk around, they're going to enjoy our parks. I mean, I just, I just think it's a win-win, and I will go mend fences with my neighbor.
Thank you.
I, I just think one more, then, excuse me, mayor, I'm, my late husband went to school there too, just so you know, and, and I agree with you, I think it's a great use for the property. My only concern is what I see sometimes when I go to church, other places than in Lake Placid when I travel, and I go to churches that are built in residential communities that people park on the street all through the, the neighborhood, and I'm concerned of the people like this lady that spoke, that there, there may be cars in her front yard on a Sunday or a Wednesday night that, that she may not be comfortable with. So that's my only concern, but I, I really like the idea of the church going there.
Okay. We have a motion and, and a second to approve ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash oh nine on first reading. No other comments? Poll the council, please.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hare?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Do you want to do Dana while she's up here? So bring, okay.
Thank you.
While you're up there, we'll go to, we'll go to three A. Yeah.
Charlotte Rodriguez, town administrator, for anyone who doesn't know, you know how you get that inside of you, that you need to say something, you kind of wonder why? I just have to say that Dustin and Jay, fourteen years ago, were a part of my personal life in two thousand and eleven. And I was a member of Grace Bible Church, and I became very sick and ended up with a three to five percent chance that I would live. For those who don't know, I have four little girls, and I am a believer of Jesus, and I'm also a prayer warrior. And Grace Bible Church rallied around my children and I, and so personally, to sit in this spot and to see it come full circle is very profound for me, but that was fourteen years ago. So I'm just, wanted to say thank you for your dedication and for seeing this through, because it's made an impact, already Grace Bible Church did in my life and my children's lives, but now to see it in the community that I get to serve is a huge, just like, wow, God, how did you do that? So I would be amiss not to give Him all honor and glory, so thank you for bringing it to our community.
I don't know about you, but stories like this is what I think makes small towns like Placid great. And I just, I, I'm just so proud of our community in a whole, and, and everything that we've, we have accomplished and we will continue to accomplish. Thank you for that. All right, Dana, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Again, Dana Riddell, town planner for the record. I just wanted to take some time with council to go over some of our procedures and policies, and to get any feedback that council may have. I know sometimes it feels a little bit like you're being put on the spot, because I'll explain something and...
Hey Dana, hold up a minute. We'll, we'll let all these, we'll let all these folks. Appreciate y'all being here.
I thought they were here for me. I'm just kidding.
I guess this is what you call a mass exodus.
Not as interesting as I thought.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. So there've been some items that have been coming up through the planning office, and I think over the years, council's direction may have changed, and I want to go ahead and make sure that we're all working toward the same goal. So the first question that I have, and it's all just really encapsulated here in my statement of issue, so I won't scroll around unless there's a particular question, which I've included as attachments, our policies for vacation of right-of-ways, our policy for non-conforming uses, parking improvements, and things like that. So the first thing that came up very recently is our vacations of right-of-way. Within the last two years, I believe the town has had three requests come before them for vacations of right-of-way. Prior to my time here as the planner, there had not been any requests for vacations for over ten years. I believe the last one was in two thousand and eleven, so almost fifteen years. So we reestablished policies, we followed the same policies as the county, and we kind of navigated our way through it as a team. We've had some turnover in engineering, some changes in how planning is handled, and I have experience in different municipalities of how vacations of right-of-way are handled. My first question for council is if council has a desire for which staff should be handling vacations of right-of-way. In the city of Sebring and in the city of Avon Park, their attorneys process and handle requests for vacations of right-of-way. In the county, the engineering department handles them, and there's some oversight from the county attorney. The last couple of years, they've been mainly processed through me here at the planning And with that question comes another question of how closely do we want to examine a property when it comes to vacation of right-of-way? We've had this dialogue back and forth, whereas in my experience with the county, if somebody requests a vacation of right-of-way, that is the only thing being examined. Meaning, if somebody says, I would like to vacate the right-of-way next to my house and give ten feet to me and ten feet to my neighbor, the only thing that staff is examining is whether or not there's utilities in that easement, there's a non-conformity that would arise from that easement being closed, or easement, right-of-way, they're very similar, and if there's any title issues with that right-of-way or easement. If that property has three hundred code violations and has ten open cases with code enforcement, that does not come into play. They're strictly looking at the request. Do we need that right-of-way? Are we able to give it up? What's the purpose of it? And what are the ramifications of giving it up? Do we, we get some money by putting it on our tax roll, but the trade-off might be, we have an easement that someone can fence as opposed to easily access. Are there any thoughts on that so far? Not particularly, okay.
I just wanted to say too, that with these, with the, I'm going to be coming before you guys, not, I've been needing to do it for years now, but I have a little piece of land that I want to vacate. It's on Lake Serena, and it really is, most of the land around Lake Serena's been vacated, but there's this one little piece by my property, and I am going to, I just want to disclose that to you all, so you know, before I say anything. I never thought it would be an issue, because it serves no purpose. And in town, when we've looked at these vacation of right-of-ways, now, I have a house on Hibiscus, and I should have said that too, while they were here. I also have a residential house over on Hibiscus, so I'm in the neighborhood too. But there's an alleyway in back of me, and that, and I've actually even put surface in the back, so people can park back there and come in the kitchen in the, in the, in the house. The problem with it is, is that it's not totally cleared, but I would fight to keep that alleyway open, because you can put, you can put garages in the back of those houses, you know, access from the back, and it's perfect. I mean, you have the real nice fronts, and then you have a garage in the back, with the entrance in the back. So for that right-of-way, but I get noticed, just like I got noticed for the college, everybody around you that, that is, you know, within, I think it's a thousand feet, gets noticed that you're closing that right-of-way, so they have the right to come, they get noticed personally, that they have the right to come and say, whether they want it or don't want it. Normally, if they don't care, they don't come. If they have a problem with it, like if somebody wanted to close it, and I'd get a notice, and I'd come and I'd say, please don't do that. But the other problem is, is that really, my right-of-way is kind of maintained, not so much, and there's a big tree right in the middle of it, and we cut it mostly down one time. But anyway, just to get back to the subject, is that right-of-ways are like that. People that live around them and use them or don't use them know what's going on, they get noticed. And if we can get them, our problem with our budget, with our financing, we need to annex them. This is an easy way to get property on a tax roll that's not being used, and I almost feel like, if we're not, if we're not going to allow it, then we should maintain it, at least maintain it, instead of let it grow up and be a problem for all the whole neighborhood, which we have some of those. So I'm for, unless there's something glaring, and I do know that one piece that we could talk about, but if they're not being used, and nobody, everybody's noticed, and they're not having a problem with it being vacated, we get it on the tax roll, try to get some more taxes in to make our budget.
I think your question was, what procedure should we follow? And I would say, I would, thank you for asking, but I don't know what I'm doing. So I would defer to the people who are in the trenches, who know what should be done to make the right procedures.
I think that what was covered though is true. You have to prove that you're not, there's no easement there, that's going to be like, okay, say the electric's running down there, or something that needs to be, Bert might get involved, like for the utilities, do we need it for utilities, that sort of thing. But it shouldn't be like, what she, what I think was trying to be discussed, it's not like whether you like an alleyway or don't, it's, it's nuts and bolts, this is the criteria, either do it or you don't.
Right, just a procedure.
It's just a procedure. It's not like emotional, and I want you to do more than's required, basically, and that's my concern.
Because we could play Let's Make a Deal. We could say, I'll vacate this alleyway if you give me more landscaping.
Absolutely, you can. The town council has greater latitude in these decisions than this has, than has been indicated to date. It is not a checkbox issue, meaning if both sides say, I want it closed, you have to close it. That is not the answer. You do have to look beyond there and see who's, who else has the right to pass and repass. A right-of-way often covers a long, longer road. Who else is on that road that has the right to use it? In vacating or closing a right-of-way, the town is literally giving land away. If you had to buy that land, often, you would spend a lot of money buying that land. So I disagree with Dana when she says or takes the position, if they check the box and we've gone through the process, they have a right to close the alleyway. You have a right to say, if there are a bunch of code violations, I'm not doing anything until you fix the code violations. You absolutely have that discretion. And you have the discretion to say, I want more landscaping. Now that's not, let, let's don't get wrapped up in that issue of landscaping, that's a poor example, probably. But my point is, closing a right-of-way is completely within your discretion to say yes or no.
And I take issue with you suggesting that I'm trying to get people, other people from using a thorough right-of-way. These, that comes up in the procedure part of it, is it going to impact traffic flow? That's in part of it, so, and then it's posted, and it says posted, we're going to close this, so everybody that's driving by there, if they see it, they're going to see it, they're going, either that or they're not driving by there, so they're not going to see it. But even beyond that, if they were on vacation, and a right, sign went up for two months or a month, or whatever it's required to do, say, weeks, okay, and they were on vacation, still, traffic, along with utilities and everybody else, looks at all of that. I think what, I disagree with Mr. Harris, that you should not hold people hostage and say, oh, I want you to put some more landscaping in your front yard, I want you to do this. I think it, you can get down that road and overreach, and nobody else is doing it. And I just don't understand why we're getting into this, okay, and then how much are you going to charge? Okay, you can close your right-of-way if you buy this over here because the town wants to buy this, or you can maybe put it into a pot to buy a park, or, you know what I'm saying? Now you're, how, where does it end? And how do you decide, are you going to start getting appraisals on right-of-ways? And then we can take that appraisal and say, let's, okay, now you're, this land is worth this much, now you have to give us land over here for this. I mean, it's a, it's a quagmire to me. I think we should be like, I'm sorry, unless there's a, now, there was an instance where we had a lot of lakefront. I was against giving it away, because we had access to it, it was a lake, and there was even a park on lakefront, we just gave it away. Now that's different. I'm talking about a major piece of property that's owned on a lake by the town, that even had a park on it, and we just gave it away. I didn't agree with that. But this is, these little pieces of property around and, and that, I just don't see the problem with just doing the procedure.
I agree with what Debra just said. And the summation of what Debra just said is it's a case-by-case analysis. When you're dealing with a fifteen-foot right-of-way, that's one thing. When you're dealing with lakefront park, totally different, let's make a deal issue. And I'm just saying, you, it, it's a case-by-case analysis, and you, and I would counsel against doing anything that would tie councils' hands. Now the question Dana's bringing is, who should process this for the government? I don't think you even have to reach that decision. You got a town administrator that can say, Dana, go run it, circulate it amongst all of us, and if we've got comments, make comments. That's the way you do just about everything else.
Okay, and, and so, that was the only instance in the twenty-one years, or how many of our years, I've been on there, at least twenty-one years, it's the only instance I've ever seen. And I see some other pieces around, but they're, they're not, they're not connected to any other roadways, I don't know how in the world you could, anyway, I just think we should just stick with the procedure. And yes, if something comes up, then we'll talk about it, like, well, maybe we might use that road right-of-way, or we might, yeah, we have the full extent for that, but we don't have to change the procedure to me and now start going down a different road.
No, I think we're saying the same thing, is case-by-case, and Charlotte can assign out to whoever she wants, or...
But I just don't like people being required to, whoever's in charge, starting to say, well, now I want landscaping, and I want that. That is a decision for me, for the LPA and this council, and not for whoever's talking to the person that's applying. I think that person that's applying...
That's the way it always works. Staff can make a recommendation, but it comes back to this council, absolutely.
But they can't extort more, they can't say, well, I'll approve this if you give me some landscaping over here, or...
Staff doesn't approve anything, Debra.
Well, I'm just saying, they can't say, I'll withhold my approval unless you do this.
But staff doesn't approve anything.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying, they make, their recommendation, let's say, I'm sorry, using the wrong term, I won't recommend this unless you do this, this, and this. this, even before I talk to them, I won't do it, and then you're, then that person that is extorting things to get the recommendation, unless the applicant comes and says, look, I just wanted to close this right of way, and now I'm being required to, to buy here and put landscaping in down at the corner of Main and Interlake, and I just don't understand it. Now, they have the right to come and do that, but I don't think that the planner has the right to go outside that boundary and decide for us and the LPA what needs to be done.
You just agree that the planner does if it's a lakefront right of way?
No, I don't think, I can't see anything in the near future at all that would even ever happen again like that, because that actually connected to us. But the other parts of this, I know that all the land, I'm pretty good at knowing most of the property in, in Lake Placid, you know, I've been here a long time, been in real estate here for a long time. I'm just saying, I don't see any, I just think we should do what, if you want Charlotte to do it, but I think whoever's in charge, I like the planner being in charge, because the planner is on the cutting edge of what all's going on. Okay, they know what, who's doing what, what, kind of what projects are coming up, and I like that, I like the planner doing it, but if that's not correct...
But that's what I was trying to get at, because they are in the, the details, the day-to-day things, they know what's going on, to, like you have been doing, give your recommendations, and then let it be discussed. But are you bringing this up because there have been problems where you're torn between two things?
So, I think there has been a real-life example recently in the processing of vacationer right of way that we're currently in the works of, and I do take the stance that I follow policy and procedure, and it is, for me, to some degree, checking the boxes. Do they check this box, do they check that box? If they do, I bring it to town council with a recommendation of approval, unless there's something egregious, like if the right of way is being used as a park, I might bring that to council's attention. But I'm not going to bring to council's attention something that doesn't check one of the boxes, like the landscaping on the property, code enforcement cases, if I would consider someone a good faith actor of the town, of the town or not.
But that's where I disagree, it is not a box check. It absolutely is not a box check. For example, they may meet all of the requirements to close an alleyway, but the town's comp plan over the long term may say, hey, that's a great area, like a train track, that's a great area for a pathway, a multi-use path. So there are other things beyond simply check box. My only point is, it is a case-by-case analysis.
So, ultimately, if the council wishes, or they simply direct the town administrator to continue to make the selection as to who processes these applications, please understand that my stance is that I will proceed with following the policies and procedures, checking the boxes, and keeping an eye out for anything egregious. But I will not be inspecting properties on a case-by-case basis for things that are more in-depth than that. It sounds like our town attorney is willing to take that role, and if that's something that the council wishes to pursue, you are more than welcome. I, as council knows, I currently have a flat rate with the town in addition to any additional work. I consider vacations of right of way as part of my flat rate, so there's no additional charge. If the town attorney also has any concerns regarding the vacations of right of way, as far as I'm concerned, he's welcome to come to the podium as a concerned resident of the Greater Lake Placid area, or a business owner in the town of Lake Placid, and make that case to council.
Well, that's ludicrous.
My other concern, when I thought about this, was, is the cost. I mean, the cost for 300, I don't know what the rate is, but anyway, the cost for an attorney versus your flat rate, that was, I forgot about that, was another concern of mine, how much time. Now, I think that this vacationer right of way's been going on almost since the first of the year, so, I mean, it's, it's a long process, and so, if we're going to be, I like the idea, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, honestly, but...
No, I know, I know.
I'm just saying, looking at the figures for the, I represent the people of town, and we're trying to be cost-effective, goodness knows, we need to be cost-effective, especially this year, we need to get out of this hole we're in, and so we don't need to be paying 300 and something dollars an hour, whatever we're paying for an attorney to do the things that we can have staff do. That's my opinion.
Well, my point is, I agree Dana should process it, but if other staff members have comments, they go in her report to be considered by council. For example, I don't think Dana's ever tried to examine title on issues like that.
That gets sent to the town attorney as part of the policy and procedure, for his review.
I didn't see that in your report here.
I didn't prepare a report if I brought it to town council as part of a vacationer right of way. I followed the county's policies and procedure, which includes less information than I provided.
I didn't see that in what was presented tonight. I'm agreeing with you, I think you should process, i- i- but if any, if engineering, if trails and paths, if any of us on staff see an issue, it ought to go in your report. And don't say, come stand at the podium like the member of the public. We're all, we all represent the town.
If it is your position...
We all bring a different point of view.
If it is your job to review the title work, and you have comments on something beyond the title work, then that's something you can come to the podium for.
That's okay, no, 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 that goes in your report.
I'm just trying to process all of the 100 pages that, that Clark and Brantley have over here with their vacation of right of way, and trying to put that in my head as a checkbox situation. If that's a checkbox situation, they didn't need Kimberly's app, and all the 100 pages that, that they have provided for us in our 215-page packet here. So, I, I think there are a lot of things to consider when you vacate a right of way, because one of my concerns when we do that, is we seem to be locked into evaluating what's going on right now. And so, let's say that we vacate a right of way, like I'm thinking in particular of one that we vacated, on, you know, where Main Street comes to the little point, there was that business back there, he wanted that alleyway behind, oh, I'm not going to fence it off, you're going to have access and all this stuff. I go by there the other day, oh, it's not only fenced off, it's a stockade fence, you know, it's, it's definitely fenced off. And, and what if then, he sells that property, and the next person wants to do something different with that? Or the neighbors, they sell their house, and now they're upset with the vacation of right of way. So, I think there's a, definitely, a little more than a checkbox that has to be done. I, I also understand that it's in part of, of what you called your, your services, so we don't have to pay extra, so you know I was thinking about that, so, I'm, I'm pleased to know that. However, I, I think that the initial application can be filed with the town administrator, and then that person can go ahead and distribute it to staff, and, and to the planner, and then everything comes back, and it still comes back to town council for final approval. Am I understanding that process correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The way this was written, I kind of have a, a problem with it, because I don't want to put all my eggs in one basket. Yes, you've, you've got your rules and regulations, you know what you're doing. We've got an attorney that interprets things maybe a little different. Personally, I want the two of you to work together. And ultimately, that's the way it's got to work, because I just, I just don't want to ever give everything up to one person. I think, I think it's bad for the council, I think it's bad for the town.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I think maybe this needs to be written a little different, if you want to go that way, but I, I think this is a multifaceted thing that just can't be this way or this way. I mean, let's face it, we've got alleyways that are, town's going to be 100 years old. We've got alleyways that have buildings built on them. We've got alleyways that don't go anywhere. Yeah, ma- maybe they should have already been done, maybe they were, we just don't know it. But these are things that we, we have to look at, but there, again, personally, the way this is written, I'm, I'm personally against it.
I don't know, Mr. Clark, do you mind if I talk about some of the things you shared with me? Do you mind if I?
Thank you.
Okay, so, I talked to him, it's been a long process, I mean, it's land that's, you know, not being taxed, that's one of the things that first bothers me. I mean, we can get on the tax roll and give, bring that in, and then he's responsible for taking care of it, instead of people not taking care of that right of way at all, or getting into, we should have code enforcement on our butt, because I'm telling you, some of our right of ways are not known, and they're not taken, maintained. So anyway, besides that, I had a conversation, I called Mr. Clark, and I said, what's going on? But then he told me that, and I, let me, I'm bringing this out, I want you to say, did you ask him to put landscaping along the railroad track? Did you ask him to put more landscaping on his property? I'm, I'm just...
Go ahead and make yours, and let me respond if you want.
Okay, but I'm saying, I don't think it's, that's what I was saying, it's like, if you come to the podium and you say, I think this should be, you know, landscaped, or you need to, we're going to give you this little right of way here, so you need to give us something back. And I don't know that that bartering should take place behind closed doors with people that are just trying to vacate a right of way.
If I could add, so, it's really not to just address this right of way. What Dana and I are running into is, we're currently waiting for some additional guidance on how the county is going to have the approval process, because there will be statute requirements that come with that, correct?
I think you're thinking of plating.
The approval process, plating, okay, sorry, she's teaching me too, Councilwoman Eberhart. However, what I have said to Dana is that, not just with the right of way, but also with the parking and the items that are listed there, is because we're constantly going back and forth. There's no clear consistency, and I understand that that's part of the process, is to allow council to be able to decide how they want to handle each one. For Dana and I, it's, how can we make this more smooth? How can we make this better for the residents or the property owners who are coming to us? And what does that process look like? So we wanted to be able to check the pulse of council and find out exactly how to move this forward. Because she runs into issues, they obviously come to me because there's such a slowdown or a lag time, or we don't have clear and consistent guidelines, because it does navigate from one person to the other, and that's complaints that we get from people across the board. It doesn't matter whether they're developers who are trying to develop here, or if they're homeowners that are residents, it doesn't matter, it's that the town does not have clear policies and procedures in place, and we pick and choose how we want to handle it based off of the person that is presented before us. And that's the reality of why that's here.
And that was, that was my intuition, is that there was something where you were caught between, and we're trying to get it uniform for everybody.
Right, how could we do that? And then, we needed your guidance and direction to know how to move forward with that.
Does the county vacate by ordinance or resolution?
Resolution.
Why wouldn't we do the same?
Because when I asked you which one you wanted to use, you said ordinance.
I think you asked if you could do an ordinance, and yes, you can do an ordinance. That's my recollection.
It was several years ago now, so...
Pardon me?
That was several years ago, but I know you prefer to do almost everything by ordinance.
No, that's not correct.
As much as you can.
No?
Okay. So, moving on to the next item...
In other words, let's find the simplest way to do what we're going to do. If it's an alleyway vacation, let's don't make it more complex than it needs to be.
It doesn't matter, because if you do resolution, you have to hold an introductory hearing, just like you would if you do an ordinance, that's how the county does it. And then the county also holds a hearing after the fact, simply to confirm that they've done it. This is something you and I have discussed in the past, and I couldn't find any reason as to why they would hold a hearing after the vacation of right of way. These are the types of legal intricacies that...
I recall the statute, Dana.
I would hope I could lean on our legal counsel on for assistance.
So, I...
Let me just profess my ignorance, what's the difference between ordinance and resolution?
Counselor, help me with this.
Ordinance is two public readings before it can be adopted. Resolution is one.
Okay.
But the statutory road closing for counties is generally applied to the town, although the state statute says the county.
Right, there is no statute requirement for vacations of right of way for municipalities, only for counties. Okay.
So it's been my position all along, we should follow the county's practice.
And that would be ordinance or resolution?
Resolution.
Resolution.
I believe the question was, can we do it by ordinance? And you absolutely can, doesn't matter.
I don't think ordinance or a resolution would solve, I don't think an ordinance or a resolution, that's not the question, it wouldn't solve the issues that we're running into today, when we're asking questions about whether or not someone should landscape their property in order to earn a vacation of right of way.
Well, that's, I, I disagree with using Donald as the example tonight on how to go forward. You and I had an absolute train wreck over Donald's, I get it, but let's don't let Donald's determine how. We'll have our discussion over Donald's, and if the council doesn't want landscaping, my point with Donald's, to answer your question more directly, Councilwoman, was I disagreed with giving Donald right of way land. If Donald was not maintaining his property as it should be, we're having to sue just across the street with...
Michael Brower.
Brower. Why would we give Donald something and then turn around and have to argue with him over cleaning up his property?
I think, I think, though, too, if you said, okay, maybe you could say...
And what I tried to do was say, Donald, there are options, you know, landscaping's one. I didn't try to tell him where to put stuff. My point was, make it look better, clean it up, Donald's on...
Well, I think that's not the point, though. The point is, is if there's a code violation, you fix it, there's already law in place. Maybe if you wanted to go to say, you can't vacate right of way if there's some kind of, the applicant has code violations, period. But you should, I'm just sorry, I just, I don't think it's American to say, okay, if you're going to vacate this, and poor Donald, I'm just saying, he's, he's, no, we, as far as I know, we've never done this before. We never said, okay, you, you know, we get rid of this land, put it on the tax roll, and you have to landscape it, and now you're going to have to donate some land down the road, or you're going to have to donate something back to be able to get that property, because we're giving you this property. It's never been like that, and now we're going down a different road. This is a different road, I'm just telling you, this is not, as far as I know, this is, this is all new ground here. And I just think, one more thing, if you're going to require that, it should come not to you or Dana to say, make the determination, well, yeah, you can do this, and just off the top of your head, let's put some landscaping over here, and you have to, and let's figure out how much you're going to have to give us to, to make up what we're giving you.
I, I can see both sides about getting something in return, but then the problem is to make it fair for everyone, and it's quantifiable, it's not, you, you can, there's no gray area, that somebody can say, well, you let him get away with this, and you want me to do this, and it's not fair, then that bothers me, the negotiations.
My concern had been initially stormwater runoff, because we don't have places for stormwater. That's a different issue from saying, water puddles on Donald, that's not what I'm saying at all. Just like with Rick Miller, when he came in just north, he wanted to close alleyways, and the deal with Rick was, we expanded, his, the alleyway Rick used was expanded to be a stormwater pond. He took his stormwater and town stormwater, so he fixed our problem. I'm not saying that would work with Donald, and my point is, with Donald's, it may be easier on him to put all of the land in one area, rather than having a stormwater pond through the middle, like Rick did. I'm just saying, case-by-case analysis.
Well, Rick had to also put in stormwater retention, because he's building buildings. If, if Donald decided to build buildings on that piece of property, he would have to go and get retention. So, I just, I'm having my, having trouble putting my head around this, and, and it's very expensive now to come in and say, now we're going to, we're with, okay, we're changing all the rules, and now your attorney can come, three or four or five meetings while we make a decision. I think we need to let him go, and then if we're going to talk about this, because Kim would have been here tonight, she's on the clock, he's paying an attorney, he's been paying an attorney to try to get through this quagmire, and this is why I think we have problems with developers and trying to move fast down... is why I think we have problems with developers and trying to move fast down the road to get our projects done, is that we cannot... I just think we need to... I don't know.
On the stormwater, though, yes, Donald may build a building like Rick Miller did, but Rick took our stormwater off the streets. That's not what Donald's said.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna argue stormwater because as far as I know, I went over there and I've looked, and there's no stormwater problem over there. He, there is no stormwater problem in that...
And I don't know the answer to that. I don't.
Well, then, but you're making... I'm just saying. But you want him to go ahead even though he doesn't have a stormwater problem, and there's no stormwater problem in the area, then he should still donate to the stormwater problem, which is just like saying, an impact fee. Then he should do parks and recreation, he should donate to this, and if that's the road down you're going, I think that alleyways are probably not the way to go with that. It's to go back to impact fees if you want to do that fairly for everybody.
I was told the county is looking at addressing our stormwater, and Charlotte said, "Let's wait until the county makes their decision." So that was our point with Donald's property. We don't know if there's a stormwater problem there, but giving up land that we may need for stormwater was where I was like, "That doesn't make sense."
Okay, so we have a freeze on everything until we get that report?
No, I didn't say that, but... And it's okay to vacate this one, Deborah. I don't care. I'm really... My point is, I want to see the council preserve your latitude in each one of these. Don't use Donald's as the example. Beat me up on Donald's next week, and that's fine. But let's preserve the latitude in how you close alleyways.
It seems to me that if we have the procedure such that a closure of a right-of-way would go through each department, and each department would be able to write an objection or say there is no objection, if there's a stormwater objection, then that's gonna be two-part down there to say, "Hey, I have an objection with this."
And there have been three different directors, and none of them have had a stormwater problem with his project.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, that's something that we need to take a look at. And I don't think we need to put Dana in any higher of a position than any other director. We want to ask her, "Is there any planning issue with this, with, you know, within your purview? Is there any issue with vacating this right-of-way?" And you don't need to get involved with all the other things that the other departments have. Let each department comment on this thing like they normally would, just like all of the documentation that we've got on the Clark thing. So each, each got letters from every one of these departments that says, "I have an objection, but if you do this, it'll be fine. I have no objection. I have no comment." As long as we had all that to look at as a council, then I should think that we would be able to make an informed decision. But I don't want Dana to be in charge of it. I don't want Charlotte to have to be in charge of it. I think somebody has to be the intake person that receives these requests. And then I do believe that's gonna have to be Charlotte, and you're probably gonna need some help before we're through, some sort of an administrative aide that would, that would do that for you. However, I don't think it should go through planning.
Well, I think that the intake person's been Dana. I mean, if you've ever closed... I've vacated property before, but you have to get all, you have to get everybody in the world. I mean, even the gas people to sign on.
Well, yeah, there's a whole list here.
Yeah, and then you get all the paperwork back in, whether they approve it, deny it, if they have any problem. You get all that back in, and that's the package. And you either... If anybody has a problem, you have to solve it before you vacate the property. That's the procedure, and that's what we've been doing.
I don't think we need Dana to do that. It seems to me that a clerical person could check off those boxes to see if that material was here. I don't think we need to waste that intelligence on that.
And I don't want to do that either, to be clear. I just want to give comments and go down the road, then y'all decide.
Really is, to some degree, administrative in nature. That is, to some degree, the nature of planning. When I put together my staff reports, I'm, you know, usually not for a road closing, but say for, like, tonight's rezoning. I send it out to all the departments. I collect all the information. I put everything back together. With the road closure, it's not as in-depth of an item of research for me because I'm not looking into zoning, future land use, or comprehensive plan. We don't have a comprehensive plan for alleyways or land development regulations for alleyways and easements and things like that. There's not even mention of easements anywhere in the land development regulations, ours or Highlands County's. So it really is, to some degree, a clerical administrative function. I'm one of the people that they get a letter from. So this is, this is our policies and procedure, and specifically, just as the county has it written, I write a letter stating whether or not the closing of the petitioned road will cause any non-conforming use of the property. Usually, that means remove access from the property. And that's, that's where I'm saying, I limit my comment to that. I'm not required or requested to review all elements of the property.
But when you get all these other letters, you are privy to that information, and it might change what you say in your report. I don't think you should have that privy. I think that each one of these letters should individually come to some source under the direction of the town administrator and not you.
Correct. So then it goes on to a staff recommendation. So for this portion of the policy and procedure at the county, this would be the county engineer. If we're in Avon Park or Sebring, it would likely be their attorney or their administrator. And that recommendation would go toward, to the applicant, and they say, "Oh, look, staff, whether that's the administrator or the attorney, they're recommending approval. I think I feel comfortable moving forward," or they're recommending denial. "Maybe I don't want to move forward. I'm gonna go ahead and withdraw my case at this point because I don't want to waste council's time or my time." So yes, it should be. And so it's vaguely worded right now because of the turnover with the engineer position, and, you know, I've kind of crafted a couple of things, and Charlotte's reviewed some letters and things like this. And this, in the case of Donald Clark, we pushed it forward to town council to say, "What are town council's thoughts on it?" And I'd also like to push out that Donald Clark's property isn't the only example. Like, when Robert Summers applied for a vacation of right-of-way, there was also a request for him to move all of his parking in the back because he has an existing building that might not quite meet setbacks. I don't know, because I didn't get a survey of his property. We don't require a full survey of someone's property for a vacation of right-of-way. But there was discussion about whether or not he should, all parking should be required to occur in the rear of the property so that it's not on Main Street. I didn't necessarily agree with that recommendation because we allow parking on most parts of Main Street. It would cause the need for more impervious parking pursuant to our town code. I know Ms. Hayes has seen that before. You know, thereby raising potentially the ambient temperature, requiring a landscape plan. Now, at this point, for him to move his parking behind his building, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars, if not more. And that's just to vacate a portion of a right-of-way. That couldn't be, the land was so small, it couldn't be used.
Was that an area that the code says you can park on right-of-way?
Yes. It doesn't make the distinction as to paved or unpaved.
So if you're gonna get into the weeds like that, now you're asking the applicant to go to SwiftMud and get retention permits, and that's another quagmire, and then you're gonna have to do this and that. It's just vacating a piece of property that's not being utilized. Get it on the tax roll. Let's get the money coming in.
So it sounds like, as a middle ground, perhaps. So it says if there's easements requested by any utility. So for, in the case of Donald Clark's property, Duke Energy requested an easement, and Comcast, thank you, they requested a utility easement. So that's where the 50-year title search came in, and it should really say 30 because that's what people are doing nowadays. We would change this to say, "A 30-year title search is required." And instead of just sending that to our town attorney, maybe we make the town attorney one of the people that they get a letter from. So if there's any additional comment from the town attorney, it's included there. For the staff recommendation, regardless of whoever coordinates the receipt of the documents and performs the administrative functions, the staff recommendation should come from the town administrator, and then the rest is just administrative.
I would suggest that this matter be tabled, and let's let Charlotte bring back a proposal. That it would include, for example, a resolution rather than an ordinance and any other changes.
I just don't think it should be this hard. Can you imagine if Ms. Saff was here and the time's running on an attorney's fee? Unbelievable. I mean, why even try?
So this is a discussion right...
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what...
I just said, if Ms. Saff had been here tonight, and how many, how many, what is it, an hour or so, we've been talking about that, that her time's running. What, for a piece of property that's just a...
And this one may be... I surrender, Deborah.
And we're not done yet.
This one's not worth fighting over, Deborah. It's not. I'm just trying to maintain your discretion in general.
No, I understand. I just, are we gonna do this every time, I guess? I think Ms. Spencer's right to say so.
So there's two more items, and I hope we can get through them a little more quickly. Parking improvements and rights-of-way. So in all the municipalities I've worked in, I haven't seen necessarily where, and I'm not saying it doesn't happen somewhere in the state of Florida, but I haven't seen where towns allow applicants to construct parking in the town right-of-way, whether or not it counts for their off-street parking requirements. So by that, I mean, if a new office wants to come in, and they have a small lot, and they can fit 10 parking spaces on their property, but the code requires 15. Say this applicant wants to put five parking spaces in the right-of-way, or the business exists, the structure already exists, and they're doing a change of use, and they need more parking, or the use even stays the same, and they say, "Look, like, I meet the minimum code requirements for 15 parking spaces, but I want to add more because members of the public come in and park in my parking lot. I want to construct more parking in the town right-of-way." There is nothing in the code to regulate that, to regulate someone else performing construction of parking spaces in our town right-of-way, or in most cases, the county's right-of-way, because we have Interlake, Dow Hall, Main Street. Those are county rights-of-way. The county has a process for on-street improvements that you can apply for. But that's, even if it's a county-maintained road, the town has taken the stance that we are responsible for parking on those roads, sidewalks, everything but the travel aisles. Since we've taken that stance, we still don't have any rules or regulations as to what can be done and to what credits can be achieved for your development, if any, for creating parking in the town right-of-way. So I want to make sure that the town council's aware there's a mechanism that we've been informing customers of, that's an agreement between the town and the developer. It's called a development agreement. It requires two public hearings. It is a process. It's very similar, almost, to a rezoning process. It doesn't really make it easy for someone to come in and say, "Oh, yeah, I just want to add five more spaces. Not a big deal." Sometimes, if it's just five spaces, it really isn't a big deal because it's less than 2,000 impervious feet, but if you start adding too much impervious surface, then what's the one thing we've been talking about? That's stormwater. The moment you start adding more parking spaces in the town right-of-way, there's questions as to who maintains the stormwater and where it goes. So I want us to be cognizant of that, that if we're approving parking, and if every developer comes in and only requests to add five parking spaces in the right-of-way, at some point, we gotta start accounting for where our stormwater is going. Because everyone might qualify for a little exemption, but you put it all together, we have a lot of new impervious area. Is town council okay with going through the development agreement process, which takes a minimum of three months and conversations and negotiations to happen with staff, again, who cannot approve anything, but generally advise the developers, you know, "This is what I think council would be looking for or want to see. We would need to see a survey of this area to know where you're putting the parking. There's a multi-use path slated for this area. Can you show me where you would, you'll fit this path?" Otherwise, when it goes to council, they'll be made aware that a multi-use path is supposed to come to this area, but you're asking to put parking there only. I think council wants to see landscaping. We don't have requirements for landscaping in the street, but if we go based off of some of the landscaping requirements that are required for off-street parking, like on a private site, then we need a landscaping terminal every 10 spaces or so.
I'm, I'm the only one sitting up here that's really affected by this, and I'd like to see the development agreement. I'd like to understand more. I'd also like, we have a historic area, and it's the downtown area. Like my property, I can't put all the parking spaces, and Mr. Harris remembers this. I couldn't open my business. Now, I'd been used, same use, for 100 years, but then I was told I could not open a business because I couldn't put parking. How are you gonna shut down all the businesses downtown? They cannot put parking on the property. In fact, my argument is, is that we want a PD. The downtown, if you look at the old Platts, there is parking on the street. That's how old downtowns were, and it's, we already have a PD. That's an old PD. If you do a new one, then nothing works. So, and I don't think that the, the original on-street parking with those PDs actually accounts because there weren't many cars back then. So we're gonna have a, I mean, obviously, there weren't many cars back then, and now there's a lot more cars. So even that PD will not completely work, but I can't see changing a 100-year-old plan for the downtown and not, and I do think we have to figure out some of this stuff, but that's what cities do. That's what towns do. They put in parking garages. They figure it out. We don't say, "Shut down your business and, oh, you, well, we'll just tear down your business because..." And if you want to build it back, yeah, you can have 100 square feet, and we put in five parking spaces. And now you have more runoff. And on Main Street, some of those places where they've had to build back and put parking in front, there's runoff. When you keep paving more and more. But I was gonna say, the other thing is, is that if you, and I was argued to build, let the people downtown, which was originally planned, build out zero lot line. That's the way it was planned. If you build out zero lot line, you have more of a tax base. Now you're taxing commercial buildings to pay for the parking. It's like a perfect plan. Now, let's not, so what do you do? You take half their property, you put in parking. You're not getting any taxes for that. So take the taxes that are generated by the square footage of the building and pay for the parking in town. So I, I guess I grew up here, and I see this more clearly maybe than some people, but I don't know if you have a change of use on this, on the Interlake or Main, and you don't have any place for parking. You just tear down your building.
What we did about 25 years ago, council did, was to basically agree with what you just said. There are a lot of areas where parking was part of the original plan. It's there. It's on Main Street. It's on Interlake. But beyond that, you don't have parking constructed in the right-of-way. So the question becomes, are you gonna say, "Park anywhere in the right-of-way," or are you going to require parking where we have historically said? And we adopted a code that said, "These areas, you can park in the right-of-way." For example, with Rick Miller, he, in his proposal on Main... For example, with Rick Miller, he, and his proposal on Main was to build some more of the parking in the right-of-way. Still be our parking, be done right, curb and gutter, some of the best in the town. And then the stormwater was accounted for in his spot. I'm not sure what Dana's asking in this one, and that is, I don't see a reason that we need to say on-street parking is strictly by developer's agreement. That's a good tool. You ask if that can be done, and I remember saying, "Yes, you can use a developer's agreement for that." What do you think now?
I think I asked you an open-ended question as to what mechanism we should use to allow people to construct parking in town rights-of-way.
I don't recall that, but, okay, I'm saying a developer's agreement works.
Okay, so that's the question for town council.
I guess a greater position is, why are we negotiating policies here? This is the first I've seen that this was coming up tonight, is when it was put on the agenda. Generally, staff kinda gets together and brings a proposal jointly to council. I thought that's the way we were going to do business.
I brought these items forward at the direction of the town administrator.
Pardon me?
These items have been brought forward at the direction of our town administrator.
That's why I said it was coming up, was because we needed to know from council how they want us to handle this, because we keep running into this problem repeatedly, and I've been here on the end of this month a year. And so what's happening, though, is that it ties our hands from being able to do business and do it properly and in a timely manner.
Do you have, do you have a recommendation?
Dana?
I believe development agreements are a fair way of assessing, on a case-by-case basis, any developer who wants to come in and develop parking. I know that it is also being seen as the town making it difficult to do business. At the same time, as I mentioned at the beginning of this, I am unaware of any other town that allows developers to come in and just construct parking in the town right-of-way. So while someone might be put off by a three-month development agreement process, followed by a development review process, we are allowing them to do something that most municipalities and local governments would not allow at all.
I just wanna point out one more thing, which we all see. Like down by New Hope, okay, when the paint store went in, they weren't allowed. They had to put parking in back, which was ridiculous, because it's hard to get in and out. They should've put the parking in front. It's not owned by any one person. So when they're not busy, New Hope would've flowed over. The dentist office had to put in parking across the street. If they'd been allowed to build out the property, get that property tax value coming in and put the parking in front, everybody would, that whole area down there would've been better, because it's flux and flow, and people are parking, and people are walking, and that's what you want. Everybody, you have to get them to get out and walk and shop and do stuff. Anyway, so we have a hard problem down on Main Street, because we're not putting on-street parking, and it's not been allowed. And it's taken up space on property that should be built out and be commercial income for tax space. That's, I'm sorry, that's just my real opinion on the thing. And it would work a lot better. And over there, like where Kim Sapp's office is, and where all of those stores are, there would be plenty of parking, but there isn't now, because there's not, it's not done. The original PD is not being followed. I just think, it's a great way to do it. We share. It's, no, I can't put a sign out there in front of my office and say, "This is my parking space." I don't want to. I didn't even want to.
So essentially, and this is where there's been some change in the direction of council over the years, and it's what Bert has alluded to, that at some points, council has wanted on-street parking. At some points, they've wanted off-street parking. There's three people who can pay for parking. Central Florida Regional Planning Council is here, so correct me if I'm wrong, right? But the town can pay for parking, and maybe through our CRA, maybe specifically as Ms. Worley is saying, you build out a property that our income goes up, so we pay for parking as the town. And we do it to facilitate a lively downtown that has a lot of foot traffic. Foot traffic is good. Walkable communities are good. The developer can pay for parking. We can ask them to contribute to, you know, if they do build out their property entirely, we can ask them to contribute to the town's parking fund. The people who drive cars can pay for parking. That's number three. That would mean meters. I don't think that aligns with the identity of the town of Lake Placid. It's an option. I just, I have to say what it is, right? But I think we're at that place where we want on-street parking. We want a walkable community. And we're also terrified that we are going to have a parking shortage and a parking problem. If Ken LeBlanc, oh, he's still here, he would say, "Having a parking shortage is a great issue." Everyone's willing to walk two blocks to get to where they really wanna go. He would say, "Look at Mount Dora." Am I quoting you right?
He's smiling.
Yeah, right?
Arlene Tuck did a study, and she got hit hard after a while of listening to all this chatter about, "Oh, we don't have enough parking." Go look at Stewart Park. There's always parking around there. Well, you know that the half of the building that were mid-Florida was, and now the pharmacy is, half of that building can't be used, because they couldn't put all the parking on their, on that corner, and they crammed in there. And I said, "That's ridiculous." There's, look at the parking we have in that area. And till today, they're not being taxed, because they can't use half of that building. I was gonna bring it back. When this came up, I was gonna say, "We should let them, almost make them, go ahead and get that on the tax roll, make it commercial, and start using some of that parking." And at night, they're not gonna be there, so it's not like they can't have, still have events, and maybe a couple times a year, they have to be restricted, but I don't think they would mind that. And I think it's better for the town to have half that building, a commercial building taxes, than it is to say, "Oh, you can't use it, because you can't put parking on that corner." You should see what I had to do to try to stack them in there.
And, but who's saying they can't? Where's that coming from, that they can't? Is that coming from planning?
Pardon?
Where is that coming from, that they can't build out that building because of the parking?
I sold the building, and it was not allowed. It was not allowed at that time, and I don't know where they're at right now, because mid-Florida used it, just gave it to people. They couldn't do anything with it.
Did it come from planning?
Yes, I saw an old planning case before my time.
Yes, it was way before your time.
But still, there's your roadblock. Not you, Dana, but that's the problem. There's your roadblock. It's the planning department.
What parcel are you talking about?
Where, actually, it wasn't the hotel. It was a restaurant.
Shamrock.
Remember Bowman's Building, and I sold it. And Shamrock's there now. It was mid-Florida. Mid-Florida was buying it. And they said, "You have to put all the parking for the bank on the property." And they couldn't use half the building. And so, and then, like on the side, they stacked them in there. But I said, "Why not use the park? There's plenty of parking at the park." They said, "No, they have to put all the parking on the space."
I remember we waived parking requirements for Shamrock.
A little bit, well, Shamrock, I'm talking about mid-Florida, and they're still not, I don't think they're still using that bathroom.
They aren't.
No, they are not allowed, because they didn't have parking.
Because of that.
How silly is that? Get it on the tax roll. Let's fix our tax problem. Let's do that.
No, that was one, we waived the parking requirements for the bank to get that building renovated.
So does that waiver carry with the sale?
I know, because I sold it, and half the building could not be used, 'cause they didn't have parking. I remember it, because I did it.
It was specific to the use. It was, mid-Florida made the argument that they don't need as many parking spaces, because they were going to have a drive-through. That was their argument. So yes, to some degree, some of the spaces were waived. But if you look at whatever the parking regulations were then, which are still the same regulations that exist today, and that particular parking waiver said, if there is a change in use, which, there's been a change in use, and no one has regulated it, you need to insert, you know, X, Y, Z, certain amount of parking. And you can, they had to reconfigure some of their parking spaces, and it could only be used for a bank. So if you look at the documents that are on file regarding that property, if you do it, quote-unquote, "the right way," go through the planning department before you do a change of use or something like that, then yes.
Yes, what?
I'm sorry, if you go through the planning department and you ask the question, technically, it should still be a bank, and no change of use should have occurred without either adding more parking or going before council for another parking waiver.
And we waived. Can I talk about yours, Ken?
If you don't mind, I'd like to comment on a few things with this. You know, it's, you know, the way I see it. I mean, when I first developed Journal Plaza, I was told by, you know, some people that if I wanted to do Phase One, I had to make a parking lot in a grass area. That was a horrible idea, you know? And because I didn't put a parking lot there, thanks to, you know, council, that allowed me to go forward with what I was doing, the way I wanted to do it. It's been a huge success, and it's brought a lot of tax dollars into the town, and it continues to. I believe that, you know, we have a master plan being done, and the master plan should identify all the areas that on-street parking ought to be put in place in the future, but only those areas, right? You don't want necessarily going to the residential areas where there's residential housing, put on-street parking up and down. That makes no sense. But there are areas that it does make sense, right? And to give you an example, there's three lots I have on Bellevue Street that we've talked about doing a pocket neighborhood. It's three residential lots. If I build three residential houses, I don't even need to go in necessarily, and we just put three houses, no on-street parking, right? But if I wanna do highest and best use, then the town ought to say, "You know what? We've identified that area that it should have on-street parking, so if you wanna develop this, you know, through the PD process, we expect you to put on-street parking in that area, right, and to contribute in that way." And that makes perfect sense, you know? So I think we ought to have designated area at this point that identifies everywhere that we should have on-street parking, you know, in the future. And I do agree, you know, Dana, that we do have, I do have a concern that there'll be parking issues in the future, you know? But I think, you know, Main Street up and down, the parking could be doubled on that street, you know? I'm hoping, you know, when we see the master plan, what they come up with, right? But we have the physical ability to do that and still have a small median in that street. So I'm interested to see what they come up with. But I think that, and if, for instance, I were to put on-street parking along some of my properties, you know, I've been told, and I was expecting, that I would try and capture the water that comes from that and put it underground in some way, right? I know the town needs to do a master plan for water, you know, and that's definitely something that's obviously needed, you know? But until then, that's small things that can, if you can contribute to more water issues, you capture that water issue you're contributing to, if you can, you know, and if it's reasonable, it can actually happen. Some cases are, you know, it's unrealistic. But that's my thoughts regarding parking. You know, we should have a master plan, consider it, and implement it. And then, when somebody, when somebody develops in town, if you tell them you have to put your parking on your property, you're turning your historic downtown into a strip, which is twenty-seven. That's the worst thing you could do to a historic downtown. You know, and I would hope that South Florida Regional Planning Council would agree with that. So if we have a historic district, we ought to have a code for that district, and in that district code, it does not require that you put parking on your property. It allows you to use parking that's on city property, because you are in the historic downtown, right? And if you are developing a property that is underdeveloped, not been developed yet, and you have the ability to add on-street parking, and the district shows that's where they wanna have the parking, then you can request that developer add the parking. But they wouldn't even necessarily have to go in front of the town, because the town code would just simply say it. It would identify. You would know it. Say, "Okay, if I'm gonna develop this property, I have to put on-street parking, because it says I have to put on-street parking," right, at my cost, as part of my development of the property, right? I mean, just, I think it's, everything is identifiable, you know, in a master plan. And I think it can all be simplified, not complicated, and developers can come in and see the plans, and see the master plan, and see what they're supposed to do, and develop within that, you know, and so on. And not make everybody jump through hoops about parking every single time when they're in historic downtown, right? As a developer, that's, that's the most frustrating thing.
And the town council waived your parking requirements, a lot of them.
Yeah.
And waived parking requirements for the bank, and if you were in a checkbox situation, you'd have had to tell them both no.
Well, unless you didn't have to tell them no, because they didn't have a parking requirement.
I have argued in the past repeal the dern parking code.
Yeah, I agree. You shouldn't end the historic downtown.
Let me finish my statement right there. Because the town council routinely waives it.
I don't think there should be a requirement. If you're designated historic downtown.
The interesting question about that is, I agree with Deborah. We've got a, like a plan development that we're hung with in downtown. Then you have those of us that bought extra land, that built our own parking, and we pay tax on our parking. Now you're wanting us to tax us to build your satellite parking spaces, so you can build out.
Yeah.
Where you have green space, you ought to talk about parking, like the rest of us did.
So, you know, I've gone through what you're talking about, back when Vastardi was on the town council, and he brought up how Hometown Network had to put in a parking lot, a drainage pond, everything else. And he said, "I pay taxes on my parking, my drainage pond, and everything else, and it's not fair that you're not paying for parking, taxes on your parking and everything else." So I, you know, so I'm like, well, he's assuming that he's paying more taxes than we are downtown. So I did the math. I analyzed all down twenty-seven, down Interlake, west of the circle, which is a strip basically, right, developed as a strip. Twenty-seven developed as a strip. Then I went into historic downtown. I took, based on the square footage that somebody owns, and they develop, who's paying the higher tax per square foot? Turns out, everybody in historic downtown, they're paying higher tax per square foot, because they could build, many of those buildings have been built zero-lot line, front to back, side to side. There is more square footage, and you pay more taxes on a air-conditioned building than you pay on a parking lot in a retention pond, by far, which is why the historic downtown is paying higher property taxes, you know, on a square-foot basis of their property, you know, beyond what the people who are on a strip.
And Bert and I will never agree on this. We will never agree on this, because you build out the building. You build out the building, and that pays for the parking. I'm not saying if somebody builds a building on one of the old lots, maybe they should put in the parking out front. They should have to go through the process to do something, maybe contribute to stormwater. But I'm just saying, let them build out the property to contribute those taxes or what's paying for the parking. You have never understood why I tried to say that. You build out the whole lot. You've got air-conditioned, commercial square footage that we're paying taxes on, and then that helps to pay for the parking, the four parking spaces out front that they get.
So between home and office essentials and the gym next door, there's an empty lot. You know, when they develop that lot, they should put the on-street parking on the city street, because it should be identified as an area that would require Miller Air. They're gonna develop their property. They pay and put the parking on the street, but they also get the credit for that parking. You know, they're gonna be able to use that parking, right? And Miller Air is a little bit different situation, because they're putting industrial building and everything else. So, I mean, they're gonna be quasi. They're a little bit of both, right? But if they got retail shops up front, that parking up front should be, you know, utilizable for the retail they put up front.
We're agreeing with that, Ken. What are we trying to decide tonight on this issue?
I think that Ms. Ventress has been waiting to talk. Maybe I hear from Ms. Ventress. I know she's been...
Pam Ventress, 12373 Lost Lake Drive. Councilwoman Hayes, you mentioned the Main Street property and Roberts' property. That went before LPA committee multiple times. He was sent back with his attorney to talk to the neighbors. One of the conditions of approval is if that property is sold and divided, the fence comes down that day. So, and there's a lot more involved. LPA discussed and discussed. They went over and over and added all these things. What if this happens? What if that happens? He spent $10,000 on that vacation of easement, and in the end, agreed to all the different conditions. His main thing was protect his property and the fence. There was some stuff going on. The public needs consistency, efficiency, and rules to abide by. Whatever the rules are, you need to have them. I watched last Monday night's meeting. I was at a convention. I watched it a couple times. I was dumbfounded at how many boxes were checked, rechecked, how long this process is taking, and at what cost. I saw Kim Sapp get up from the audience time and time again, each time stating cold, hard facts. After watching the entire meeting, I wrote down extortion, ridiculousness, what's happening, what am I missing? Unfortunately, the last two or three LPA meetings have been canceled, haven't been held. I would think something like this would go to the LPA for input and discussion. They have a lot of thorough discussion on things. They have a lot of thorough discussion on things. And then brought to the council like normal with their in- input or recommendation. Um, I think there's a difference between internal vacation versus if it's on Highway 27, Interlake, Maine. These were old grandfathered, little teeny-tiny lots. Um, time is money. Town has a bad reputation when it comes to business, in my opinion. I think it's anti-growth and I think something like this just exemplifies it. Um, don't penalize applicants because the town isn't prepared to operate efficiently and effectively. So I've heard you're going to postpone it for a year, got to get all this stuff down. You guys know how long it takes you to do stuff. October of last year, um, the town clerk brought a awesome report on rental fee increases or what the rate should be. It's been almost a whole entire year. Y'all talked about it four times, still in the same spot. I can see things dragging on and on and on. Um, just bring this up, whether it's ordinance or resolution, Senate Bill 180, does it come into play? Can't be more restrictive, but this is something that's going to be more restrictive. It won't be able to go into effect till October 1st, 2027. Could be extended another year. You can have Mr. Clark wait until 2028 for something. Multi-use pass been talked about. Twenty-five years in the making. Multi-sidewalk from the schools to Placid Lakes Bridge has been in the works, 25 years. It's great to have, this is Collier to Polk Trailways, this is so-and-so, this is all these things. What are you doing? There's still no sidewalks. Um, and then a couple of months ago, the town had a right-of-way easement, utility right-of-way easement on Catfish Creek Drive, and it was approved by this town. There was a contract, you rescinded the contract on the right-of-way. Where's the consistency? I know that, it, there's just a lot. The county, the stormwater plan y'all are talking about, it's been extended ti- year after year. I think it's three years in the making now. So if you're going to hold something contingent for not just Mr. Clark, but other people on, say, just throwing out, we got to wait for the county to do their stormwater plan, it's, it's ongoing. I'm trying to wrap it up. Um, I don't think the town can hold hostage to reasonable applicants for unreasonable amounts of time. Time is money. Rick Miller's name has been mentioned several times. It's been five years he's been trying to build those new buildings and the, um, the ground has not even been broken yet. And, and so, is that his fault, your fault, whatever? Um, I think something like this has to be built into the equation. Are you user-friendly? It, from where I sit in the audience, you're not user-friendly. Um, two or three years ago, town council meeting was a CRA meeting. I think it was Panoni gave a great presentation, master planning, parking, um, make Lake Placid a destination, not a thru- thruway. And it was, the first phase was a potassium walk around the Journal Plaza. You had a second phase, you had all this stuff. I come here year after year, y'all revisit the same things almost over and over. Just that people change, you forget you've already done this. You got to move on at some point and not delay people that are trying to do the right thing, in my opinion, and get caught up in all this other stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mayor, um, I think this was, these were discussion points that I had, that I wanted to make sure council was aware of. Um, as mentioned, the town administrator and I discussed that we all need to be on the same page. And I think a prevailing theme that we've been battling is a certain amount of equitability and making sure that things are enforced consistently or applied consistently to all residents and business owners in the town of Lake Placid. There is one more item on my list, but at this time, I would like to put it aside for now and maybe bring it back next month. I think we've had a lot of great stimulating conversation that will help us make decisions going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. Anything else of Dana? Okay, we got a lot to think about. Probably get you and her and discuss some things. Okay. All right, now we'll go to, uh, Public Hearing 2D, First Reading, Ordinance 2025-12, Code Amendment Ordinance, Food Truck Regulations. And we have our honored guest with us.
Wow, thank you. Uh, good evening. For the record, Jennifer Coto-Salsbury. Thank you. All right. Uh, once again, Jennifer Coto-Salsbury with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. And first of all, I did want to apologize for being late this evening. Thank you for moving this to a little later on the agenda. Um, before you tonight is an ordinance to address food trucks. And, uh, just really looking, we had had discussions with, uh, town council in April and, uh, coming back also in May to get feedback. And, uh, of course, there were changes in the, the legislature a few years ago that basically said, uh, we can't say no to food trucks, but we can say, you know, where they go and what are some of the standards. Uh, that being said, Ordinance, uh, 2025-12, uh, amends Section 117, addressing solicitors and peddlers, stating that, uh, food trucks are basically exempt from that section. And then, uh, also creating a new Chapter 75 in the Code of Ordinances, specific to food trucks. Um, I do have a PowerPoint with every single piece of text, uh, but rather than going through that, uh, just kind of hitting some of the high notes with the ordinance, uh, it does address, uh, permitting for special events and, uh, site drawings that are required as well as, um, non-residential parcels, uh, in the zoning districts that would allow for food trucks and also a separation from residential properties. And also making sure we do not, um, obstruct any existing off-site, uh, or, I'm sorry, off-street parking. So really just building in, uh, regulations to make sure that, uh, the allowance of food trucks, uh, does not really provide, uh, any challenges to existing businesses and the use of the city. Uh, and I am available for any questions and I'm happy to go do a deeper dive if you would like.
I have some nitpicky little things in the wording later on, but go ahead.
Okay, all right. Uh, well, again, I'm just going to scroll through, again, the high points, um, exempting food trucks from Chapter 117, Solicitors and Peddlers, uh, adding definitions, applicability, general requirements and required documentation. Um, really the text in Section 117, again, um, exempts, uh, regulations for food dispensing vehicles, as they're called in Florida statutes. And then, again, creating a new Chapter 75, um, in case there's a need for a definition for food dispensing vehicle, we have that consistent with Florida statutes. Uh, and then really, again, uh, when there's a special event or a food truck rally, there's a number of requirements, uh, to address, uh, those events and permitting requirements. Uh, and then again, in Chapter or Section, uh, 75, um, just addressing parking and not really using any required parking, uh, not being in the right-of-way unless you have local government permission. And, uh, really also addressing that they may operate 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM. And then if there's any lighting, that it cannot, uh, really cause any off-site impacts. And food trucks cannot be, uh, located in any, any required yards of the Land Development Code, so not in a required front yard or in any required open space, for example. So, um, I will, uh, kind of stop there and, and go for the, the items that you may have.
Okay. Um, I think there's only a couple and, like I said, they're nitpicky things. One of the, uh, the original draft had something that if there was, um, a food truck on an unimproved lot, that there had to be a driveway apron to protect our streets. And I did not see that in here.
Um, that may have been removed and we certainly can add that back.
It was in the, way back in one of the original drafts, and I, the whole idea is that if they're pulling off onto a vacant lot, an unimproved lot, that there'd be some kind of a transition, a, a driveway apron, so it protects the curbing of the town streets, the, not the curbing, the, um...
Edge of pavement?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was trying to answer the administrator's question on one, and I didn't hear the first part of your question. Would you start again?
So, okay, the original draft had protection for our edge of pavement, pavement, that there had to be a transition, a concrete apron going into the unimproved lot. And I did not see that in here.
In other words, the one that I had drawn, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Did you get mine, Jennifer? W- we basically said if you drive off of edge of pavement, there needs to be an apron if you're going into someone's undeveloped lot.
I, I, um, I know that we did and somehow we, we missed that in the last draft.
I mean, yours is great, don't, don't look at me.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I really like it.
Oh, well, thank you. I, we certainly can add that, though, that, I apologize for that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I like the whole thing. Um, the other one is originally it restricted the size of the food truck to no more than 10 feet wide or 20 feet long. Maybe that's in state code. And they restricted the awnings to five feet out.
Uh, my goodness, I'm so sorry, I did not bring Brenda tonight. Um, I will double-check that. Uh, if there's anything prohibiting it in statute, uh, we would add that language back in.
Okay. And then, um, um, and if, on our page 78, and I gotta pull it up, that it was, um, let me pull it up here, page 78. I told you these are going to be nitpicky. Oh, on item 20 at the bottom of the page, it says, "No more than one mobile food dispensing vehicle shall operate on any property at any one time unless as part of a special event." And I would add, "Or as, or within an overlay district."
Or what?
Or, or within an overlay district. Because the way it reads, we can do an overlay district and we can't have more than one truck.
Without seeing the language, I'm not sure.
The bottom of page 78, her seven, the, uh, ordinance, 7 of 10, item 20.
I'm assuming we're saying special events could put several trucks on one property.
Yeah, it allows several trucks for special events, but if you want to technically read it, you cannot have more than one in an overlay district, which is against, which is contrary to what the intention is. It's just a minor wordsmithing.
I would def- uh, I'm, I'm not seeing in 20 where you've got an overlay.
No, no, it, that's the point. It does not include an overlay.
Oh.
So add a special event or an overlay district.
An overlay district generally is a multitude of parcels. I mean, it could be like blocks.
Yeah. So the way this reads, you cannot have more than one truck in that area. It, it only allows more than one truck.
On any property, I assume, maybe it's the word property we need to address.
Okay, well, it's just, mm-hmm.
Okay, because are you talking about parcel, like parcel ID that's identified as one platted lot? Or are we talking about, as you say, an overlay district, which could be blocks and blocks?
Yep, yeah.
So maybe, Jennifer?
So just add at the bottom, "No more than one mobile food dispensing vehicle on any property at any one time unless part of a special event or within an overlay district."
I'm concerned that overlay, what type of overlay district?
In other words, you had talked about, Jennifer, you had talked about having like a, um, a, a pod of food trucks. And I envisioning that as being part of an overlay district.
What's...
So the way this is written, technically, you could have the intention of having a pod with multiple trucks, but this would not allow it.
If I could take a brief segue, um, it struck me when I was working on this six, eight months ago, that we know where the food trucks are going to be generally. Stewart Park, Devane Circle, probably down at Kenny's. Address those by name. And, and I forget the way we put it in last time, but do you, that would, seems like that would be under special event?
Oh, see, I'm reading that as an overlay district.
Pardon me?
I'm reading those areas as being an overlay district.
I'm not sure why we would call them that. I need to hear what Jennifer...
Maybe it's my, maybe it's my interpretation of the district.
An overlay generally means additional rules on top of all of the existing zoning. I- is that a fair statement, Jennifer?
Yes, I, I just want to, the intent here, and maybe we should call it something else, is that, um, the goal was that if there are properties that may be town-owned, that are outside of maybe the commercial or industrial, non-residential zoning districts, that the town would like to identify potentially for the use of food trucks, that those would be in an overlay. So we may have, um, and I'm going to be terrible with examples right now, uh, but the, um, you know, the circle where Old City Town Hall used to be is an example, that this is a two-part deal. This ordinance, then what would follow would be a resolution, a map of potential, um, town-owned properties that could be considered for food trucks.
Okay, and then when those districts are defined, that would cover this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But let's call that your overlay, for example, and come by the parking lots, two of them, across from Kenny. You may say, "Those, put as many food trucks as you want, up to three each or whatever."
Yeah.
Special event or just in general.
Right, exactly, exactly. So I was cons- I was just tightening up the wording to make sure that that would be allowed and not prohibited by this section. It's just a quirk of the wording. But, don't worry about it. When we, when we define the overlay district, we'll say you can have more than one. Okay?
What I do...
All right, then, okay, now, do we need to put in any kind of penalties or is that covered by somewhere else?
I defer, I defer to the town attorney. I mean, you have code enforcement. If they don't follow the requirements here.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was an open-ended question. If we, if, if they, like, they don't pick up their garbage or they don't do whatever, it's covered somewhere else?
I doubt it's covered somewhere else. I think it probably should be covered here. If they don't do their garbage, then do we let them come back?
Yeah.
Or do we fine them or...
Yeah, I don't know, so...
I, I would say we need to address that here if it's for this particular event. Um, I, I, let me back up and, and start over. I think one of the conceptual questions that I would have, maybe, Jennifer, do you want food trucks in general to go forward on automatic pilot, meaning they can park without town permission further in certain areas?
No, no, no.
You want them all to be under special events?
No, no, I like the whole thing the way it's written.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I, if they don't observe something in here, uh, just pick whatever. Is there any consequence somewhere?
I, I haven't seen that written in anything that's come before us yet, but it has been, it has been, you know, mentioned that there should be, and there should be like at the first violation and the second violation and third violation, you know, something of levels like that. And, and any particular violation can call, can be, uh, under the first and the second time or the third time. You don't have to have a specific penalty for grease and another penalty... and another penalty for trash.
No, 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 no.
You know, if you have any violation of this, it's chapter one, any violation of this, again, it's chapter two.
Yes, right.
You know.
Any violation, I just picked trash for an example.
Yeah.
So, any violation, and maybe it's covered in the code enforcement. I'm just making, just questioning whether it's covered somewhere.
I don't think we want to involve code enforcement in this. If we can make it its own entity and complete it, I think that's probably to our best interest.
Code enforcement is generally a process.
Okay.
This is where we would need to put a penalty, I would think.
Yeah.
And the one thing that I called out and still believe, from a law enforcement perspective, if they're impeding traffic, that's not a first, second, and third. That's move it today, right now. You've got five minutes or you're going to jail. So...
Yeah, yeah.
That's a different set of issues.
It's a public safety issue. The other thing I didn't see in here, and maybe it isn't important, but I didn't see any clause or whatever for, that if you're, let's say if you're selling Puerto Rican food, you can't set up in front of La Pupsa, you know? Excuse me, that you, you have to be a certain amount of feet away from any competing restaurant of the same type.
Well...
There was something in one of our original versions.
Yeah, but Jennifer, we're covered here by, it has to be a special event that's authorized. So, somebody can't just run in and set up in front of La Pupsa. It's not a free-for-all.
No, it says that you can, you can put up a food truck somewhere. It doesn't have to be a special event. The special event has exceptions, where you can have more than one food truck on a piece of property, but a food truck can essentially be anywhere as long as it falls within these limitations, but it doesn't say anything about a certain amount. I think it was like 500 feet from a restaurant if you're selling food or something like that.
I think that was the old one. Jennifer?
I don't believe that's in this draft, but I would recommend we just maybe table this. I can have our team who put this together. There's other ordinances. We can kind of bring that all together, like a distance separation from bricks and mortar. Doing the code enforcement and fees and what triggers this, that, and the other, that's out of our purview. I would turn that over to legal counsel. So, this might be an ordinance. I know we've worked on it. It sounds like we've missed some things. I'm so sorry I didn't bring our team tonight, but it sounds like there's a lot more that needs to be addressed, and I apologize.
Well, I only have two more.
Yeah, sure.
And there's, should there be something in there about not having amplified sound?
Sure, we can add that.
There was something in there about, about the sound of a generator, but it didn't address anything like music.
Right.
Yeah. I guess I was kind of figuring it would all come under the same roof, but probably we'd have to mention it specifically.
So, I think your noise ordinance would apply to that.
There is a noise.
I mean, that should be in your noise ordinance, anything over a certain decibel, no matter what it is and who's doing it.
Public state law.
There is 150-foot separation from residential if you have a generator. Yeah.
Okay.
There's a county noise ordinance that would cover that.
Is it enforceable?
Do you have decibel-reading equipment?
No.
That's the challenge. That's the challenge. We ran into it, the sheriff's office, too. You can, it's written in county code for the noise ordinance, but we can enforce it because we don't have anything that reads the decibel.
Right.
So, there you go.
So, if we simply said no amplified music?
But amplified to what degree? Is it just music?
No, just zero, zero.
So, you can't have music?
Correct. You could have probably a guy on an acoustic guitar. That's not amplified, but...
Uh-huh.
Just for discussion.
Amplified music, who?
Music.
So, it's okay to have a regular guitar, just don't put an amplifier on it? So, that would mean no recorded music?
That's also amplified. It's coming out of a speaker.
Okay. Just trying to flesh out. You getting that, Jennifer?
I did. I'm just putting no amplified sound.
Yeah.
That's that, yeah.
I'm done. Thank you. I really liked it. It was just, I was trying to pick up some of the things that we had talked about before.
This one's tough. There's a lot of little tiny things.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Let's stick around because I know we're gonna have questions.
I think we tabled this.
Yeah. Are there any questions, Jennifer?
Ken. Ken LeBlanc, I do have a few questions. One, I thought I heard you say you wanted to limit food trucks to 20-foot long. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Did I, I see 20-foot...
Well, this was, this was in the, one of the original drafts where it, and maybe the dimensions can be adjusted, but there was something that gave limits.
I mean, very frequently, there's 24-foot food trucks, 26-foot food trucks, you know? I mean, if a truck is a driving truck and a food truck, it's gonna tend to be longer. You know, if you have a food truck you pull behind, you know, where do you, where do you measure it from? Because the hitch sticks out in front of the trailer, things like that. So, I think we should be careful about limiting the size of them because they come in all different shapes and sizes. I think they should have to fit onto the space they're put into, you know, 100%, you know, so it can't stick out, you know, beyond its property or whatever. So, I think we should be careful about that. And regarding music, I think we should be a little careful about that, too, because music creates ambiance. A lot of downtowns have music piped through the entire downtown. You know, those are things we don't have now, but maybe we will in the future. But when you have food truck rallies, frequently, there's bands playing, there's music playing, things like that, you know? So, it just adds to the ambiance of what you're doing. But I agree with, I think, Now had said, you know, there are sound ordinances, you know, you can't play your music stupid loud, you know? That's just not acceptable, you know? And so, I don't think we should be limiting, you know, their ability to have music. I mean, certainly loud music, yeah, I agree with that 100%, you know, but just reasonable, you know? I mean, because once you go 20 feet away, you may not hear it if it's reasonably being played, right? But nothing stupid loud. I agree with that, yeah. But other than that, I think it's good to have a food truck ordinance. I think, if I'm correct from what I'm understanding, you will be allowed to put a food truck on private property. On private property is very easy to do. Stay away from fire hydrants, stay on the prop, you know, I think five foot from the property line, things like that. 100, you know, if you've got generator, 150 foot from residential, all of those things. But if you want to put it on public property, then you're gonna have designated areas that you can do that. And if you want to create a designated area, like I might want to see if we can create one in front of the Journal Plaza, we would have to submit a drawing and create an area, and maybe a 24-foot would stick outside the area so then it's not allowed, you know, if it gets approved at all, right? So, I'm kind of thinking that there's an avenue to submit to become an acceptable area that may be on city property or in a city parking lot or something. So, there's, this creates a means to go through a process for approval or denial in that case. But if it's on your property, then you already just meet the requirements and it's acceptable. Does that sound right, Jennifer? Yeah, okay. So, I think that makes sense, and I think that works.
I still think we ought to put something, what's stuck in my head is that if you have a restaurant and you're a standalone restaurant on a property, and there is no restriction for a food truck that could pull right up in front of your restaurant and sell from a food truck, then that food truck is not paying the same taxes that you are. They're not, they're not subject to the same restrictions that you are, but yet they're selling same food or similar food, or food in general, right outside your standalone business.
I think that's not allowed in this, right?
Is it in here somewhere?
Because if it's on public property, doesn't it have to be in a designated approved area on public property?
Well, what if it were, what if it were the parking lot that's across from Journal Plaza? What if they moved into that parking lot right there? Can they...
Well, I don't think they're allowed to unless they go through your process and get approved for that.
Okay, so...
Unless I'm wrong, you know? That's what I'm thinking. I think it would be approved to have a process for any city parking space.
If they could do that, then they could sell right in front of La Pupsa, which is, you know, a restaurant that's, that's paying the taxes and going to jeans for that matter as well, you know?
I would think that that parking lot would only be utilized if it were a food truck event.
Right.
And that got, you know, vetted and approved as an event for one time or a certain amount of times that got, went through the process to get approved. I agree, nobody should be able to just pull up. I mean, even in front of the Journal Plaza, you know, to park in the loading zone where we do, I think that we should have to go through a process and show you a drawing of where we would like to do it, and you guys would approve or whatever the process is, would say, "Okay, that is safe. It's not in the street, it's out of the street." You know, it's selling onto private property, all of those things.
But in general, even in that case, even though when we had this discussion before, Morden and Ennis came in and said, "Oh, we don't care. We like the food trucks there."
Yeah.
But essentially, they're selling a similar product to Morden and Ennis and to All-in-All and they're in there in a food truck, and these other guys are in there, they're paying their town taxes, and this guy's just using his food truck.
I think for the most part, it's only similar because it's food, not because of the type of food that they're selling. I mean, you know...
Just the fact that they're selling food, period.
Yeah, I mean, they're just selling food, you know, but yeah. And, but everybody at the Journal Plaza feels that people stop at the Journal Plaza because the food truck is there, and the food truck is just a thing that people like. They see food truck, they pull over, they go eat, you know, and then they'll grab a beer, sit at their tables and eat and everything. Everybody, you know, I think in that area is very understanding and pleased and understand there's a synergy that comes from, from having that there, you know, because we don't offer that at the Journal Plaza food truck, you know? So, it's not a bad thing just because it's food truck. It actually brings a different element. People that don't want to sit down and order and sit and eat, they want to just stand up there, order their food, walk away with their food. They might sit and eat it, or they're just gonna take it home and eat it, maybe, but at least it gets them there and out of their car, right?
Well, you can walk into Morden and Ennis and not have to sit there and eat either because they'll bring it home to you. Same way with All-in-All. So...
Yeah.
I'm just trying to stick up for the businesses that, that pay their taxes and here's the food truck that doesn't and, you know, that type of thing. That's all.
I believe they are protected. The way I read this, you have to have a special event that's been approved, or if it's on private undeveloped property, you can't just pull up anywhere. Or the overlay district is okay, but you can't just pull up willy-nilly in front of any parking spot. So, I believe they're protected.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but you can be on private property.
Yes.
In which case, you could put a restaurant on private property, too, right? But, yeah.
When we say private property, does that mean commercially zoned? It wouldn't be on residential?
Yeah, no, right, yeah. Not in a residential area. No, I agree with that. Just a, you know, commercial district, you know, type property.
Just like any restaurant, for example?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I've been to food truck events over in Palm Beach, and they line up the roads, and I don't think they are concerned with their, by a restaurant or anything because it just creates so many people in that area.
There's a lot of people following food trucks.
That's the point. They're trying to get people in, and then they come back.
Yeah.
Once they walk in.
But that's a food truck event.
Right, right. So, they want to just get as many people as they can into that area to see, market what they have, and then hopefully those people will see something they want to come back to and come back. That's, that was my experience.
Yeah, and there are food, food trucks do draw people because they have a following. So, they go out on Instagram, "I'm gonna be here today," you know? They may want to come into downtown Lake Placid, and it may be good for downtown Lake Placid, but if they pull in front of a restaurant, you know, it's not expecting it. I can see that the restaurant's gonna be upset about it. So, you know, so they could find a, a commercial property that they could be on the property that is acceptable or something, maybe that works, right? Hartsell's parking lot is the example. You know, they can go in Hartsell's parking lot if Hartsell agrees, right? And then, then it's, it's better than pulling into a parking space in front of...
The one that was brought to my attention was when Lockhart's allowed a food truck in his private lot, on his private property, and one of the restaurants complained, and I think it was the, oh gosh, I don't know the name of it, the Mexican restaurant that's on the other side of him.
Next to it, yeah.
Was complaining, "Oh, why did you get to do that?"
Yeah, I mean, you know, somebody's always gonna complain about something. So, I think in some cases, you know...
Oh, we know that.
Yeah, right, exactly. But I do think ultimately it is a good thing to have food trucks in your town, you know? You don't want to be overwhelmed by them, but to have, you know, some food trucks here and there, I think is a good thing because it's just a unique, different thing. It's hip, it's cool, it's what people like, you know? It changes, right? Not exactly the same food every day, right?
Florida Water Rate Study. Are they here?
Yeah.
Oh.
They've been since...
Okay, yeah. All right, anything else? Okay, let's move on. We have a presentation, Florida Water Rate Study.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Before we do though, let's, let's take a five-minute...
Soon knowing not those ready to see, you intentionally held that issue back. Confirmation of the location of the fence line is the bend boundary. Thanks. We'll see.
How can I get that? Oh, okay, okay, I can see that. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Good. That's okay. All right.
Period. Send the survey and I'll take...
Can you do that? How can I get that? Oh, okay, okay, I can see that. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Good.
...
...this year. However, if you do not make any rate increases, you can expect that all of those reserves will be exhausted by the end of fiscal year 27. We also noted, as I just talked about your asset management plan, in that plan, we identified items that needed to be repaired sooner than later. We also identified what we call, and you can see with the red line or box around it, it's what we call our magic number. This is the amount of reserve you should be putting back every year for those assets that are currently in your system that we have assessed. Now, this number is low because there's still some things that are not assessed, such as all of the meters that you have in your system, your buildings, your vehicles, things like that were not assessed during our original asset management plan. Now, the information that was used to do this rate analysis, we did look at your actual expenditures from previous fiscal year. We looked at the budget that is currently fiscal year 25 that you're currently in. We took into consideration your capital improvement plan. We did add a 5% consumer price index increase to all of your O&amp;M, your budgeted items for the future years. And then we looked at your existing customers, your existing rates, and what their consumption was over the past year to identify what your revenues are currently. This is a picture of your capital improvement plan. Just wanted to make sure that you see this. This is brought to everyone's attention. There are several large items here that are either, we're assuming you're going to get grants, or hopefully, maybe you've already have these grants available. If not, then you may need to pay for those out of pocket. So, it's something to keep in mind moving forward in the future years. So, things that are new, I guess I would say new to the system that were put into this rate study, we did address the asset management that planned or asset management costs that are still needed and not currently being budgeted for. But this rate in, um, rate study shows a prorated increase versus, I think, right now, you do not have a prorate. So, if they use one gallon, they get charged for a thousand. Mine charges them based on the gallon. So, what to expect if you do implement the rate increases that are suggested here tonight? You would be looking to be able to cover all of your expenses moving forward, starting in fiscal year 26, without having to borrow from reserves. You would be able to start a unrestricted reserve and have a balance of at least 94 days. This is all, though, depending on when this actually gets implemented. My, my study shows that it being implemented October 1st, so any month after that, that it's not implemented, you can expect to lose about, I think it was $33,000 each month that it's not implemented. So, next, I'm just going to show you some of the, it's kind of an overview of what the town's existing revenue requirements are. This is a graph of your current drinking water expenditures by the columns that you see here. The red line indicates what your current rates are. The gray line is indicating where we'd like to get you to, to make sure that you can cover. This is just a extenuation. It's a table of what you just saw, showing you how much you will have to borrow at the end of this year. This is just the water requirements, but with the increases where you'll be over the next five years. Waste water, as I said, you look a lot better on the waste water side. This is a minimum CPI increase that's being suggested, they continue to do, that will get you over to the capital and the debt that you're anticipating. Actually, debt you're already paying, you're not anticipated. Some of this will, some of your debt will fall off here in '27, but you will still have to maintain another loan that you currently have. And here is that breakdown for the waste water. Now, we talked about reserves a little bit. Every town needs to have some reserves, some backup, a backup plan. You do put in reserves for capital projects that you're looking to do and to go forward with. You also have to consider the demand that you have and the customers, the volatility that you have. Natural disasters, we live in the state of Florida, they are prevalent for us, and you have been hit a few times here recently. Hopefully, it wasn't as bad as some others, but these are things that you need to prepare for. You need to have reserves available for. Now, that being said, there is not a one-size-fits-all approach to reserves, but Florida Water, we do caution you not to go below 90 days of O&amp;M expenses. Okay? So, if another pandemic hits, people just decide to stop paying their bills, you can still run your water system and your waste water system for 90 days. This particular model is with rate increases, what you'll be looking at. So, next year, again, if it don't happen, this is actually implemented, we only have not 90 days left. But we may be paying, your momma may recommend an amount of 270 days in the next five years. If you do not, and then this is what you can expect. And you will have all of your reserves, that's for fiscal year 27, or your use of your reserves. So, any questions before I show you the rates? So, this is what we're looking at, if rates are increasing, existing rate problem, there's just residential drink drinking water. The blue column indicates when rates are increasing, with increases. First side, your source base rates, and every year's usage to use. For thousands, thousands. These are the residential supply rates, where they have no label increase. These are the residential supplies and usage. Commercial rates. And then commercial waste water. Here, here is if they were to use 5,000 gallons of water, a residential customer, here's what they can expect, their new bill to look like, I mean, their existing bill to look like. What does this look like? This is commercial, and this would be the rate. Now, this is where you fall, with these rate increases is where you fall. And this is really tiny, I apologize, because this is small, can get you a bigger one, one you may need to see. But you're right in the middle, with these rate increases, you're right in the middle, and take into consideration some of these have not increased rates recently, or areas that has had rate increases currently. So, some of those down here, I actually supersede you soon. That is my presentation. Any questions?
What's your distinction between, and this is it, there was two categories, inside and outside?
Yes, so, outside the city is 25% higher.
No, no, I mean, there were two sides, let's say difference inside. Can you go back to that?
Let me go back.
Oh, in the future. Yeah, yeah, there. There's existing inside and announced inside city.
So, this is the current, blue is what you currently, this is what you're paying now, the existing, this is what you're paying now, these are the new rates that are suggested with blue. Blue is what I'm suggesting, she's starting paying as you rate increases. Yes, yes. And then take that, 1182, and you add $4.71, six cents for usage. Yes, yes. 1,000.
I just thought it was really helpful, as I went through some of the rest of this, there was a portion in here that said, how many households had this particular rate, and how many households had that? And you look at that eight-inch, you know, meter size, and you're like, oh, my God, look at the size of that bill. But there's like two in our whole area. It's got to be like Advent Elf or something, you know?
Actually, these are much lower than normal.
Yeah.
Yeah, y'all are charging a lot lower for those size meters.
But if you look at the majority of the people, it's what I'm thinking of, is how much more are they going to pay per month? And it looks like about $7 to $10 per month that they're going to pay, maybe a Starbucks coffee, you know, difference.
You, your company, your organization, I should say, your organization has done, through the years, I've been on the council, it's just been fabulous to the town of Lake Placid, and I, I'm really glad that we have you, and you're wonderful. And I know it's a long drive, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is very good study.
Thank you.
All right. You're saying on, in the city, we should probably go up like $5? Okay. Now, that's just for this year?
That is.
So, every year, we need to look at this?
Uh, yes, sir. There is a, an additional increase that will need to happen next year. It's only about 8% on the water side. The wastewater will, CPI, whatever the CPI increases, that's where y'all need to stay.
That's in here somewhere, isn't it?
You had the chart up just a moment ago. Could you put that chart back up that shows the five-year progression of rates?
Um, I don't think I have the five-year progression.
Mine says page two of 47, it's in the second.
Oh, yeah, I didn't have it on the slide. It is in the plan.
I thought it was three, two, but the one you sent me had.
Yeah, this is the second one. Page two of the second.
So, if you're looking at the rate study itself, you should be able to see that on page, starting at page 16. And so, you see in '26, we're talking for the 5/8 inch meter, it would be 1,850. In '27, it would go up to 1,997 for the base rates.
Page 16, you said, right?
Yes, ma'am. I think, if you have the most recent one.
I got you, I think.
It should say rate schedule at the bottom of it.
It's here.
So, if you would go to page 16?
Of the rate study, not of the presentation.
Bert, this is five years. Were you wanting three years of progressive?
Well, that's what we discussed right now, and then revisit it, do another rate study in about three years, to see where we're sitting after this rate. You might have adjusted down, it might go up, it's hard to say. Right now, where we're sitting at, we're not going to have any reserves here. So, we decided, we had a conversation, and we talked, we just showed the three, three-year rate cost at this time, with the, I believe it's 22 and 5, right?
22, 5.
And then the next one, next three years will be 8%, but we're going to revisit it in three years to see where we're sitting, see, and the reserves. So, it's a possibility it could go down, you know, if we get, you know, more revenue.
But this right here will give you the reserves that you think we need.
Right now, to, you know, so we'll have our 90-day reserves for each department.
And that is ensuring that everything in this rate study doesn't change as far as your expenses go. If your budget next year goes up 10%, your rates need to match it.
Right. I think the biggest thing that we have to try to explain to the people is why the rate increase this year is 22%. Because, and it's because of previous errors, but, but we have to explain that so they don't, you know, just freak out, because if we say to them, okay, this, this year, we have to catch up because there were some mistakes previously, but from here on, we are anticipating increases of less than 10% as we go on.
And revisit it in three years.
And revisit it, yes.
Right.
I think we have to.
Just so we can reassess what we have going on, and making sure that our operations are all covered, and we working on getting our reserves to this recommended 90 days.
And explain to people why we have to have reserves, focusing on storms, because that's really kind of where they focus.
It's just like all our reserves,旱涝齐灾. You have to have reserves. Um, you have to have, case storm comes through, blows off. Then, it tells us, something happens, we lose a whole thing, or, well, place, place water lines, they, you know, you have to have some kind of, shirts, this is what it is. And you can't depend on that shirts, and then try to build a cap, so we can start doing small projects on the waste water side, but they're not allowed to get your answer, or not offered to us. And in their features, I don't see the ants coming towards us, they want us to get in the game, so we can justify their impact before we hit our mouths. So, as, as, as we move on, this is small cap project, we can fund ourselves to get more actions, get more revenue, and then we can do some other small projects. So, it's like taking a, like a rotten apple, it's going to take a few small places, we'll get there, and we have to get those reserves, capital, water, and waste water.
Also, when you explain, you know, why we have this huge, apparently huge percentage, if you, I'll put in the numbers that I think is your summer, the average household, like 5,000 gallons a month, the dollar amount. Make sure that, because it's not us, it's much of a shock, we see the dollar amount when you see this percentage.
Exactly. Focus on the actual, our park that's going to get the pocket, the dollar amount, not the percentage. Percentage, as you say, we'll calculate correctly.
That's why we asked them to put in the dollars.
That's why I put in dollars and not percentages tonight.
So, rate orders must come back for first reading, next month, we'll have three readers of automatic increases.
That's, that's recommendation to, full water is suggestive, 22, and 5% of waste water. I'll, 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 attorney, and we'll work together, the board is ready for you for next month, and second reading, we have a second meeting next month, the following month. So, I don't know if we're going to hit that October 1st deadline, but we're going to be close.
But if, if we do, like, we have a history of doing, it's going to cost us about $33,000 a month, every month we delay it.
That's correct.
If I understand your figures correctly.
Right. So, we're just trying to balance things out and trying to get it back on track, and I think.
You recommend following these guidelines?
Yes, sir.
And I will point out one other thing when you're doing the ordinance. You do want it to say CPI, or, you know, the 5% or whichever's greater, CPI or whichever's greater. If you're going to implement what we put here today, the 5% versus the 8%, if your CPI is above that, I mean, that's high, it's above that, but it has happened, we have had our CPI at 9%. So, it needs to be adjusted accordingly.
So, is that, it's not ready for us to vote on today, but it could be ready for us to vote on next?
So, what we're asking today is for your approval to accept these numbers, and then we'll move them in and put them into an ordinance for next month's meeting, for the first reading, and then discussion or whatever, if you have any questions. And then we'll present the second reading, and then, then it'll be adopted.
Second meeting in October, which would be the one that's.
Right, so we're just looking for your approval of the suggested numbers right now, and me and Bert will start working on the ordinance so we can present it to you. If we have two meetings next month, we can get it in on the second meeting.
Can we?
13th and 20th.
Yes, sir.
Can we make it retroactive to October 1st? I just thought I'd ask.
Congress can, but.
I thought I'd ask.
I think, as I said, we'll be close, so, you know, it's, anything that we get through, Diana was saying that this year, our reserves will be gone, so we need to start building up those reserves.
You have a page number 16 that shows the five-year projection of rate ordinance increases, but we're going with the first three of those. 2025 is the current rate, as I understand it.
That's exactly right.
And then 20, so we will increase it to the 26, 27, and 28.
Yes.
That's easy for me to drop into an ordinance, that's what I wanted everybody to nod their head, and say, those numbers go into our rate ordinance. The question is.
Based on this, based on, these, these would be the same, based on CPI continuing at 5%.
I agree, that's my que, that's, actually, that is my question. Those are based on a 5% CPI. If I put in that number and CPI is higher, you're saying you want us to have an automatic percentage increase based on CPI, on the delta between 5 and whatever it actually is?
Yeah.
Five and whatever.
Match whichever's higher. Yeah.
You see other communities using a fixed number or CPI?
Whichever's higher, I do.
I was with them when they did it in Boling Springs, why I'm saying yes.
There's a stellar example. Um, that's fine.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And if you need me to create that, where it's just those, those years, I can send that to you.
Thank you.
In Excel.
Come on up.
Thank you for your work. This is fantastic, very good.
You're welcome.
You too, because I know that you've gone back and forth quite a bit with you and your team, so we greatly appreciate that. I know that Mr. Warner has spoke highly about all the work you and your team have been doing.
Thank you.
Amen. And then, just let me say, it's my fault, I gave her the wrong time tonight, and she was patiently sitting through it, so, thanks again.
Pam Petrus, I go to utilities meetings as well. I think this rate increase is desperately needing, needed, it's been needed for years. Having said that, know that at the last utilities meeting, there were only three of five committee members present. There was, they did not end up making a motion to the council. Motion was made for the full rate increase, it died for the lack of a second. Motion made for no rate increase, died for lack of a second. Motion made for total of 15% increase, died. So, just, y'all need to be prepared, when it hits the public, you have done your mileage rate increase from, to the 3.65 from the 3.1. I think the public relations part of it, you got to get ahead of this, it's extremely important. Make sure that people understand, this isn't because of new development, there, you know, you did a $40 million sewer system because new people, this is for fixing the sins of the past, basically. That has to get out there. I can't, I can't tell you enough how you have to get in front of this, I would think. I just need a little clarification, because the proposed amount is 22% for water, 5% for sewer, and then you have the CPI. So, is, are you really suggesting 22% for water, 5% increase, so a total of 27% the first year?
No, you can't, you can't put it together like that.
Okay, so, but, just to be clear, so it will be a true 22% for water, 5% for sewer, and then it rolls on to the next year, and then you're talking about whether it's.
8%.
So, it's 8%. People are just going to need to know these things, and I would still say, it's getting new customers onto the system to help cover and spread out the cost. I'm still concerned about the Lake Placid Camping Conference Center and the State Revolving Fund loan for the 1.6 million. Those customers should already, you know, be getting billed, in my opinion. I don't see any kind of movement going forward, but just the public relations part of it, and I think, I think you've even tripled the rate. I mean, you have places to spend this money, but it, it is needed, but get ahead of it with the public relations.
Pam?
Yes, sir.
You're hired.
No way.
I think we need a public information officer for the council.
Talk about throwing her under the bus.
Look at how quick she sit down.
You, you know we appreciate you and everything you tell us, and God bless you. Thank you.
I'll add a few comments, since we're on the, the water topic. I did meet with Senator Aaron Graw's office today to find out about our appropriations request, and the two requests we were taking forward was for our expansion of the advanced wastewater treatment plant, where we had to scale back in the original plan, where we had all of the different plants that were on there. I'm looking at him to make sure I'm saying that accurately. And then also for the police department. We did apply for police department last year at 800,000, so we requested for that same amount of money. We had a very frank conversation at that table right over there, where I was informed that we were given $40 million for an advanced wastewater treatment plant, and the expectation is, is that we will come up with a way to deliver on our advanced wastewater treatment plant and what was originally discussed and outlined. I don't know what that looks like. I went to Mr. Warner, and I'm like, what are we going to do? He says, I told you, we're not going to be able to depend on grants, we're going to have to find a way to do this. So, we don't know what that's going to look like right now. However, what we do know is that there is no opportunity to apply for grants at this time. That portal was closed for this whole year unless we already had an application in, and we did not. So, they were not seen, and they were not reviewed. We will apply next year, and when we were at Florida League of Cities, Councilwoman Worley and also Councilwoman Hayes and I met with DEP while we were there, and they did say that they were hoping that as soon as that portal opens, that we will be applying, because they knew that our project had been cut back. But all of that to say that they are expecting for us to have a plan and to deliver on that. And as we already know, we have exhausted our funds, and we've gone through ad nauseam our financial situation, and it is a good concern, and a great concern, that if we have a hurricane right now, what will the town do? Because we will be expected as a regional utility to make sure utilities continues to function. So, I say all of that, not to leave us on a bad note, but that we have a lot of work still ahead of us, and it's going to probably take a minimum of three to five years to even dig out of it, and that's being very transparent. So, if we're looking for a quick fix anytime soon, that's not coming.
I don't think we can, we can expect to do that, because the deficit is too large.
Correct.
But we, and we can't tax our people with all of that. We have to go about this, and we have to take a little bit of a hit now, but we can't continue to take that big of a hit and, and be fair to our constituents. Did you want to talk about the, the other grant that you're asking for, PD?
Do what?
You want to wait?
Yeah, I don't have all that information.
Okay, never mind. Okay. Where are we? I don't even know where we are.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything else to come before council?
Did you have anything? I just wanted to ask a question, also, what we're talking about, the AWTN plan, and the funds, you did not get those funds, is that what you're saying, that they turned those down at this time?
The, the funds for other projects that were connected with it, like, to milk up here, has its own wastewater plant, we wanted to, did it on a new one, a small subdivision with their own baggage plant, we wanted to get them off, because they haven't set one around.
Are you currently in a BMAP area, and are you under the guidelines that you have to have that AWT in?
Yes.
In '23, or '32, by '32?
By '30, I thought it was, I mean, '23.
Is it, okay, they may have moved it out, I thought it was '32. Okay. So, that being said, we, you may need to address a new rate study sooner than later, because that, that money that, I mean, that amount that was put in there was strictly grant, so that 25 million that was up there is if you got the grant, and if you don't, then that's going to change things a whole lot.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so.
All right. All right, any other comments? Anything else to come for council?
Do we need a motion for us to move forward with the ordinance?
Oh, I, do we need a motion?
No, that was consensus.
Yeah.
Because that's, okay, I'm just making sure. We don't want to delay it anymore.
Just bring it by ordinance next, next minute, okay?
Thank you.